Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors, the Carson City Redevelopment Authority, and for this evening, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Carson City Board, School District Board of Trustees. Today is Thursday, February 19th at 8:30 a.m. It's just after 8:30 a.m. We're in the Community Center Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street here in our very own Carson City. Could we have a roll call, Sue, for the record, please?
Supervisor Bowden, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Shirk, Mayor Kroll, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Who's having us the invocation today? Nick, come on up. Get a start on the right foot. Good morning to you.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be able to come before you and just to pause and reflect on who we are and who you are in our lives. God, may you guide and lead this team. May you show them, God, your will and your plans for people and for our city. May you fill them with strength. May you touch their bodies and give them perfect health and just sustain them throughout this day. Guide them in everything they say and they do. We love you, God, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're now going to take up item number five, public comment. This is the time to comment on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the public body. Anybody? Come on up. Good morning to you.
Good morning. My name is Mary Lemming. I'm the track operator of Carson City BMX, and I publicly want to come in and thank the Board of Supervisors, Parks and Recreation, Buildings, all of Carson City Group for finally having our lights at the track. It's been like over 15 years we've been waiting. It was a big project, and I just, I know a lot of times I've done some thank you letters, but I wanted to publicly come in and say thank you for the work. All our members, our writers and so forth are just so excited about it, and we can't wait to have our soft opening, which will be in April, and start racing at night in May. It just makes life a lot easier and, and so, I don't do well in public speaking.
All right. Your card, the card I think that you sent to the entire board, and I think we all got it, is a pretty cute card.
But I wanted to, just like I said, go on the record for everybody, just saying thank you. We're all excited about it and can't wait to actually officially turn them on and start racing. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Mary. Thank you. All right. Anybody else, public? Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vic Castro, or as some of most people know me, he's Coach Castro with the Carson High School Football Program. I also serve on the Carson City Planning Commission. When I met with this board back in June of last year, some of you had noticed that I coached at the high school and asked how we were going to do. So, I'm reporting back with a report on that and a small token to you. One is the, we ended up winning our fifth out of six, this is the fifth time in six years we've won the league title, and we went on to play in the regional championship where we just narrowly lost to Reed 28 to 25. As far as the 2015 season goes, we're very excited, and we think this is the year we're going to get Carson back to state. So, we wanted to just give you an update. But we also wanted to thank you for all you guys do throughout the year, everything that you do, and we brought this on behalf of Coach Blair Roman and the entire Carson football program. We brought one for each of you, which is our league championship shirt from last year, and on the back is the motto for which that squad had for 2014, "Family." So, I don't know who I would give these to. We brought a couple extra larges and some larges, and these are for you guys.
I think we're all small up here.
Last year's squad had a couple bigger guys.
All right.
But, so, on behalf of the Carson High School Football Program, we hope you come out this year, if you'd ever like to come, get a sideline, just get ahold of myself or Coach Roman, and we look forward to your continued support, and thank you.
Coach, thank you very much. Okay. Oh, the LEAP, okay. So, we do have LEAP here. All right. All right. Thanks again, Coach, and thanks for your work on the planning commission. Okay. All right. Any other public comment? Okay. I don't see any. We'll take public comment as we go through, as we usually do, where it's appropriate, and it usually is appropriate. So, now we'll take up item number six. Approval of the minutes, December 18th to January 5th. We'll take up December 18th, 2014 first. Everybody had a chance to read those? Motion's in order if we're ready to do it.
I move to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2014, as presented.
There's a motion and a couple seconds and an abstention. So, on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstained. One?
One.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll take up the minutes of January 5th, 2015.
I move to approve the minutes of January 5th, 2015, as presented, and look forward to Supervisor Bagwell being able to vote on them.
Can we have discussion?
Discussion's in order.
Because I actually, yeah, I get to do this one.
Discussion's in order.
I gave corrections to staff to fix all of the nay votes, to just list the supervisors. So, if you'll make that correction in your motion, I will happy to do a vote.
I move to approve the minutes of January 5th, 2015, with the previously submitted corrections.
There's been a withdrawal of the original motion with the consent of the second and the motion, new motion on the floor with a second on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. We'll now take up item number seven, adoption of the agenda. I don't see any changes. Okay?
We're good, Mr. Mayor.
Unless there's an objection, we'll take the agenda as published. We'll now move to item number eight. This is special presentations. Tad, are we going to do this?
Yes.
All right. You want, how should we do this? Let's, uh, let's all come down there. How's that?
Mr. Mayor, would you like us to do a quick presentation?
Yeah, why don't you do a quick presentation first? Go ahead. Go.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and Board of Supervisors. Our LEAP program, our Life Enhancement Academic Program, we started last June through a partnership with WNC with an intern program. Andrea Sedna here is our second intern, and they do roughly six months, they've been getting, what, six credits?
Yeah.
So, the program, small, but it's been very successful. We've had, we've been, we've assisted 10 people with finding employment, and out of those 10, we found six jobs for them. And we've assisted eight with obtaining their GEDs, and two of them completed the boot camp at WNC and obtained their GEDs. And one of the gentlemen here this morning, Saul Diaz, he's got, obtained his GED and now is enrolled in college, so he's doing very well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea here and let her tell you about her program.
Hello. Again, I'm Andrea Sedna, and I'm a student at Western Nevada College. I believe the internship is great. It's awesome. We, what you do is for every 45 hours equals one credit. So, I'm doing six credits, so I have to fulfill 270 hours, which is, you know, quite a lot. So, I feel like I have like a full-time job, go to school and everything, but it's nice. It's great. I like helping people. So, with the program, I help assist them obtain their employment, obtain GED. If they need housing, we work with Dave Gibson at the Health and Human Services. We also work with Lynn Ellis. She works with the workforce program, so we help them if they need employment. We kind of send them either to her or they come to us, and we just work with them with resumes, and we kind of go with them with job applications and just kind of help them guide through. So, we just kind of give people the extra push. So, I feel like it's great, like, I mean, he finished, which is awesome. And we also have another woman that finished, but she's not here today. But, I don't know, I believe that they should offer more internships to other students, not only in the Department of Alternative Sentencing Department, but all either within the courthouse or the sheriff's office, but, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Andrea.
Kate, would you like to say, tell anything about the program?
We're very proud of the program and the success we've had with it, and we've had two wonderful interns that basically, basically from the ground up, they built the program, they designed the logo, and have done all the legwork. And through the, the community outreach that we've had, we've made wonderful connections that we didn't even know we had throughout the city that could actually assist with the programs, especially for transportation to and from the college. We've gotten free transportation on the jack bus. So, it's been a great program for us to, to find those, those contacts that we have within the city and use our resources within our own city and that connection with WNC. And it's been really wonderful to have that. And as Andrea said, I would like to see more internship programs throughout the entire city because it's great help. We have some very intelligent young students coming out of our local high school here, and we could have a lot of resources within the city that we could provide for them and actually, they could give back to us, and we could give back to our young people in the community. So, that's kind of a plug for the interns.
That's a good plug. Before we do any certificates, Board members, comments?
I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank the staff from Alternative Sentencing. I went on a ride-along shift one evening, and I just wanted to say that Carson City's very lucky to have such dedicated officers and a team that cares about their community. And they were very professional, and I wanted to publicly thank Officer Hale and Reba for their ride-along.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to them.
And I just want to commend your department. You continually strive for better, and to me, that's huge for the community, and this is a wonderful program. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How we doing this morning?
Good job. Okay. Ashley?
She was unable to make it.
Oh, she's unable to make it. Okay. Okay. So, we have, Saul is here, right? Saul, on behalf of the Department of Alternative Sentencing and the Board of Supervisors and your community of Carson City, this is a certificate to you that reads as follows. Saul Diaz has successfully completed the required course of study approved by the Department of Education for the state of Nevada, along with the completion and well, and well cooperation of the LEAP program, and is therefore awarded for this, for this, your achievement, given on this 19th day of February 2015, signed by your chief and signed by the mayor. And we want to congratulate you, and I think I speak on behalf of all the board, well done and keep up the good work and just kind of look at the next horizon and the next hurdle and know that you can do that as well. So, you want to say a few words? No? Not a politician yet, huh? All right. Mom, you want to say a few words?
I do.
Okay. Come on.
The mom needs to say a few words. Always has a few words. That's good.
Well, I am the parent of Saul, which, as you can see, I'm very proud of him for coming a long ways, for our family having such a challenging life the past couple years. And if it wasn't for them here, and for Andrea, who's been very persistent in having him here today, he, he would probably be disoriented, even though, you know, I'm a parent, and I try my best to bring him up to light, but without the help of the officers and Andrea here, I don't know if I was going to be able to accomplish that here. And my son, he's a very smart kid, and, you know, in the future, I know he's going to become a great person, and he is going to be going to college now because he has the support that he has from our community here and our officers. And I want to thank everybody for everything. Thank you.
Well said. Well said, Mom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And when Ashley comes, we'll do the same.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Tad. Thanks, Kate. And thanks, Saul, very much. All right. All right. Now, let's, Susan, we're going to, do you want to talk to us about some good things that happened regarding the fair?
Always.
Do you have some help up there with you? Okay.
First of all, Western Fairs Association, which is an association, what it says it is, is all the Western Fairs, Western states and Canada. There were about 40 fairs recognized at this year's convention for achievement last year. We entered, we were recognized in the category of inspiring collaborations, and it was for our work with Carson Fan, or Casino Fan Dango for our parking issue, and where they came on board and let us do our parking. And for that, we received second place. And then in the category of anything goes, which is for overall excellence in fairs, and that includes the facilities and vendors, entertainment, exhibits, and overall fair experience. We actually had members from the Western Fairs Association that came up, spent a day at the fair, and actually did experience the fair. And for that, we received first. So, yay. So, I want to congratulate the mayor, the Board of Supervisors. Marina works for her first year's leadership in getting the fair going, and all the departments, every department in this city just went out of their way to make it happen, and all the people that volunteered and helped to make it the success it was. And so, I have two plaques for the awards that we won, and I will present them to Nick.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll display them proudly. And did I recorrect? Did I, maybe I missed what you said, but was this the first new fair in 30 years?
It was the first new fair in 30 years. They've had festivals and celebrations, but this was the first actual, from the ground up fair in, in over 30 years.
I know, I don't know who else was over there, but Supervisor Bagwell and I were over at the Western Fair Conference, and it's really rather a large deal, I would say. Lots of food, too.
A lot of fairs, and like I said, it's all the Western states, Arizona and up to Washington, Idaho, and into Canada.
Well, Susan, thank you, and thanks for a good job.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I asked the board to come down. We'll kind of squeeze down here in front down here, and we'll do some other good things, talk to our employees about length of service. Craig? Craig Low? Not here? Okay. He's working. All right. Putting in more years of service.
This is graveyard.
Oh, is it graveyard? Okay. Well, that explains that. He's on graveyard shift, and he's now taking some well-deserved sleep time. Linda Lawler, good morning to you. Linda, on behalf of Carson City, we'd like to present you with a certificate of thank you in recognition and appreciation for 15 years of continuous service, continuous dedicated service to Carson City. On behalf of all of us, thank you very much for your service. Keep it up, and come on up here and say hello to the other board members, and then stay there if you would. Kim. Good morning, Kim. How are you? Good to see you. Kim, this is Kim Christensen. In recognition and appreciation for 20 years of continuous dedicated service to our community, thank you on behalf of the board, and thank you on behalf of your community for all the work you've done for these past 20 years. We want another 20 years, too. All right. All right.
Can we have, I know that Paul's here with Kim, so can I have any family members that may have come with those that are being recognized today?
Come on. Come on up. We're going to take some photos. Come on, Paul. She went, she went when I said another 20 years, man. She said, oh, wait a minute.
Okay. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. Let's now move to item number nine, Health and Human Services. This is for the potential approval of a grant for epid, for infectious diseases, the Ebola associated supplement grant. Nikki, you want to take us through what we're doing here? How much money it is, and if there's any required offset or things of that nature that might affect our budget, and also some good things about the grant that might help us stay safe in our community? Go ahead.
Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. So, the first grant that we're asking to apply for, it's called the ELC Grant. It's a supplemental. It's the epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious disease. Both of these grants that I'm going to talk about today, we have the base grant, and these are supplemental, that are coming through the state from the CDC, and it's in response to Ebola, like we saw. A lot of us think that Ebola is over with. We haven't been hearing about it in the news, but the fact is that it's still a problem in Africa, which means it's still going to be potentially a problem here. I heard a report the other day that it could be up to two years before they've got it controlled over there, so we're looking at two years that it potentially could be a problem. And there's still individuals that are being monitored throughout the United States. We haven't had to monitor any up here in the north, but through Carson City, but that there is a potential for that. So, this first grant, we're applying for the Health Care Infection Control Assessment and Response Project. The application amount is 28,500 for a two-year period. Some of the activities that we're looking at are to develop a standardized outbreak toolkit, assisting the state hospital-associated infection staff with a gap assessment of infection control practices and outbreak reporting of jurisdiction-specific acute care hospitals, and then later in the grant period, perform a follow-up assessment to confirm mitigation of gaps identified. So, for disease surveillance, we are, we have the jurisdiction of Carson City, Douglas County and Lyon County. And then we'll also develop and map an inventory of acute care, non-acute care, and ambulatory healthcare settings, and then conduct at least one assessment of an acute care hospital utilizing the CDC's Ebola readiness assessment tool. And within this grant, no new CCEA full-time positions will be created. We'll be using existing staff or contract staff.
Questions, the board? Anybody? Public questions? We ready for a motion? Supervisor Abell? Nick, Jim, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You're going to be using existing staff. Is that correct?
Existing or contract. We're not going to create new positions for this.
Okay. So, existing staff, they would be taken away from their duties they have now, or they're going to be reassigned, or?
It would be in addition, and then in, like, in an area where if we need to bring on a contract person, we would do that to fulfill the activities. And it would be paid for through the grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Abell? Now, we'll go.
I move to approve Carson City Health and Human Services application for the epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious disease Ebola-associated supplement ELC-EAS grant.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion discussion.
I did already.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But always keep me, keep that in mind if I blow by it. I don't intend to. Thanks. Okay. On the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Take up the next one. Nine Bravo, Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Okay. And this is the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Supplemental Grant, the Ebola-associated. And like I said before, it's a supplement to our existing grant. We'd apply for $88,192, and some of these activities will include develop and implement a hospital training assessment tool for infectious diseases, develop an infection control plan for East Fork Fire EMS units, and like I talked about before, our jurisdiction for public health preparedness is Lyon County, Douglas County, and Carson City. So, and then in response to that infection control plan, we would conduct trainings on the plan and conduct a drill, update staff on the viral hemorrhagic fever investigation guidelines, and Ebola is a viral hemorrhagic fever disease, conduct training and a tabletop exercise for the epidemiology and nursing staff incorporating these guidelines, develop a community mitigation plan that will specify the policies and procedures for controlled movement of persons, isolation and quarantine, and other public health actions involving the appropriate legal authorities and how these actions will be enforced, and we'll train staff on that mitigation plan, and research environmental cleaning and waste management. Companies in northern Nevada develop policies and procedures for waste management and disinfection and train staff. These activities will be completed by September 2016, and like the other grant, we're not going to create any full-time CCA positions.
Public comment? Board? Anybody? We okay? Motion's in order.
I move to approve Carson City Health and Human Services application for the public health emergency preparedness, PHEP supplemental grant.
Motion, my supervisor Abell. Second, my supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried.
Thank you.
Go forth and do good work. Thank you. All right. Let's take up 10 Alpha. Who's doing this? We've got Kim and Darren, you coming up here? This is the issue of paying the construction contingency release final payment in the amount of $9,674.04 for the BMX track lighting project we've heard a little bit about during public comment. Understand? Go ahead.
This is, good morning, Mayor and Board Supervisors. Kim Belt, purchasing contracts. This is a, to accept the work as completed.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion discussion. I did already. I'm sorry. But always keep that in mind if I blow by it. I don't intend to. Thanks. Okay, on the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Take up the next one, nine, Bravo, Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Okay, and this is the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Supplemental Grant, the Ebola-associated. And like I said before, it's a supplement to our existing grant. We'd apply for $88,192. And some of these activities will include develop and implement a hospital training assessment tool for infectious diseases, develop an infection control plan for East Fork Fire EMS units. And like I talked about before, our jurisdiction for public health preparedness is Lyon County, Douglas County, and Carson City. So, and then in response to that infection control plan, we would conduct trainings on the plan and conduct a drill, update staff on the viral hemorrhagic fever investigation guidelines, and Ebola is a viral hemorrhagic fever disease, conduct training and a tabletop exercise for the epidemiology and nursing staff incorporating these guidelines, develop a community mitigation plan that will specify the policies and procedures for controlled movement of persons, isolation and quarantine, and other public health actions involving the appropriate legal authorities and how these actions will be enforced, and we'll train staff on that mitigation plan. And research environmental cleaning and waste management companies in northern Nevada, develop policies and procedures for waste management and disinfection, and train staff. These activities will be completed by September 2016, and like the other grant, we're not going to create any full-time CCA positions.
Public comment? Board? Anybody? We okay? Motion's in order.
I move to approve Carson City Health and Human Services' application for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness, PHEP, supplemental grant.
Motion by Supervisor Abad. Second by Supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Go forth and do good work. Thank you. All right, let's take up 10 Alpha. Who's doing this? We've got Kim and Darren, you coming up here? This is the issue of paying the construction contingency release final payment in the amount of $9,674.04 for the BMX track lighting project we've heard a little bit about during public comment. Understand? Go ahead.
This is, good morning, Mayor and Board Supervisors, Kim Belt, purchasing contracts. This is to accept the work as completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to increase the contingency and to approve the release of final payment for the contract for BMX. I understand that the contractor ran into rock during construction and it extended the, increased the scope of work, so that is why the contingency was increased and that's why the, and I believe that scheduling issues with the complex, the project needed to move forward in a more efficient manner, so that's why the change order wasn't brought forward to the board previously.
Okay, why don't you hang out there? And Darren, why don't you tell us what's going on here, from your perspective, please?
Good morning, Darren Schultz, Public Works, for the record. As you know, our typical construction projects, when they're awarded here, we ask for typically a 10% contingency, and that contingency is used during construction to help us manage unforeseen conditions as well as things that come up during the construction additive, things that we feel need to be added to the project. And 99% of the time, that's the way the project flows, and at the end, we come here to ask for acceptance, and we have spent some portion of that contingency. In the rare case, as here before you today, we exceed that contingency. And in this case, what happened is we discovered rock underneath where the light pole, the standards were going, and, which we didn't know about ahead of the time, so it wasn't designed that way. And so, we had to modify our design, and as a result, the contractor had to spend additional funds to build his footings for this. The amount of that change caused us to go above the approved contingency that we had here, but what we did is looked at, because of the amount of change, the actual dollar amount, what we do is on a case-by-case basis, and I want to make it clear, this isn't something we do every day. It's very, very rare. This is the second time it's happened in my time here. We determine if the amount that we have to go over, how that compares to the overall project, if by going over, there is money in the line item budget to pay for that overage. And the third thing we look at, okay, if we stop the project now, tell the contractor to stop work, and then we schedule to come before you to ask for that additional money, what's the loss that that's going to cause us? And so, in this case, for just over $6,000, we felt it was prudent to move the project forward and then come here at the end, accepting the project and asking for that remainder money. The other thing that was in play here was that part of this project was funded by a grant, and that we had to have the project complete by the end of last calendar year, or that money would have disappeared and we would have really had a problem on our hands. So, a few contributing factors came before us, and we made the decision that that was the best use in moving forward for the city, and we come before you today and ask for that. We try to never let that happen, but.
Board comments? Questions?
Darren, is there a limit at which, I understand the parameters that you were under with regards to this, but is there a dollar amount limit that's been set that does not, that precludes you coming before us? Or if you exceed that, you do have to?
That's a very good question. There is not, I want to go on the record that this is not a formal policy. This has just been our practice, and we can discuss that if you would wish.
I do think that's something that probably should be discussed. I know that from the Visitors Bureau standpoint, we have a limit as to how far one can go before, it needs to come before the board, and I think that's something that should be discussed here.
Okay, Supervisor Shirk.
I'm along the same thinking that usually in the practice, I'm accustomed to, is that if you have a change order that exceeds 10%, you need approval prior to? If it's less than 10%, you can go ahead and do that of the total contract. Is that kind of your ballpark figure, too?
That would be certainly acceptable to me. Like I say, this rarely happens, and so, yeah, if it was over the 10% of the contract, stopping the project and coming back here, to me, that makes sense, yes.
Other comments? Public comment? Board, I know we're going to probably take up the issue, I think staff needs to kind of mull us over a little bit about coming up with some ideas, but on the actual thing, do we want to take a motion? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the work as completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to increase the construction contingency by $6,880.84 for a total contract amount of $193,480.79, and to approve the release of final payment in the amount of $9,674.04 for contract number 1314-194 titled BMX Track Lighting Project to Impact Construction.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski. Couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. Kim, take up 10 Charlie, this is, or 10 Bravo, rather, the east-west transmission main?
Yes, this is.
Phase 2A2?
Phase 2A2 of the construction, for the construction of Carson City east-west transmission main, exactly. This is design services in the amount not to exceed $145,380. This is a construction contract to provide survey, geotechnical, and civil engineering services, and the, I think Darren's here to discuss if you've got specific questions about the project itself.
Why don't you give us an overview of where you are, Darren, and where we're going, and timeframes, and who we're going to disrupt?
Thank you. Darren Schultz, for the record, these fun ones. I thought I'd just back up a little bit. It's been a little while since I talked about this, but we do, as you know, when we select consultants, which we often do, to help us with our designs and sometimes our construction management, the process for that is every two years, we put out a request for proposals. The private consultants submit on that, and we form a team that ranks those proposals, and we shortlist the top two or three consultants in that particular avenue of work that we're looking at. And then, over that two-year period, as projects come along and we need to use a consultant, we go back to that list that we shortlisted and choose one of those top one, two, or three firms. In that case, that's how we came up with our selection of Manhard Consulting here. They were reviewed and ranked and came out, and they were in the top, so therefore, that's how we got to where we're at now. This next phase, we're excited about moving this project forward. We do know it impacts the public significantly, but the gain we're getting with being able to move this water across the west side of the city is great. The current project underway, just outside the building here, is going to take us right up to Roop Street, and will tie into a main in Roop Street. This phase of the project that we're talking about here will take off from Roop Street, continue west on Washington, get us across Carson Street, and just two blocks on the east side, or the west side of Carson Street, is where this phase will stop. It's going to be disruptive because it's down the middle of the street, and we're going to do a number of repairs, ADA-type repairs to Washington as we go through, fixing handicap ramps, as well as a portion of new pavement as we go through. It's not a back-a-sidewalk-to-back-a-sidewalk total retrofit. I wish it was, because it would be nice, but we obviously can't afford that. And we're hoping to start construction on that right in July this year and start moving across town, so.
Okay. Public comment? Anybody? Board? Ready? Question? Jim? Go.
Darren, a couple quick questions. On the ramps that you're doing, do you have any grant approval funds for that, or is it just all out of the Public Works funding for the ramps?
Right now, the ADA ramps, yeah, all the ADA ramps on this project are Public Works funds. We do not have any federal grants that are going into it.
And what is the total price of the project, if you can recall? I'm just curious.
This phase of the project?
This phase of the project.
Do you have it in front of you?
And then, while you're looking for that, you say it's going to stop at Washington. Is there a reason it's, is it because of the ranch that we're not going further?
Okay, this phase of the project is going to go, take us across Carson Street. We will have future phases that will continue us up the west side, and eventually will tie into our water treatment, our Quill Water Treatment Plant, way up on the west side. So, there's future phases coming. The contract before you today is the $145,000, the total cost of construction. Because we haven't designed it, we just have a basic estimate, but we're right around $2 million, a little less. Thank you.
We okay now? Supervisor Abad?
I move to approve contract number 1415-130 pursuant to NRS 332.115 subsections 1B and NRS 625.530 with Manhard Consulting Limited to provide professional design services for the Phase 2A-2 of the Carson City east-west transmission main in an amount not to exceed $145,380, to be funded from the various Carson City capital projects constructions accounts as provided in fiscal year 2014-15 and fiscal year 2015-2016.
Motion by Supervisor Abad. Second by Supervisor Bonkowski on the motion discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, let's take up item number, where am I, 12, or 10 Charlie? The MAC?
You got some disclosures?
Pardon me? Yeah, I'm going to start off on a disclosure here, because I don't usually do this, but I'm going to make a disclosure relating to this item on the agenda. I have requested and received counsel from the district attorney concerning the circumstances at issue, and the district attorney has advised me that the circumstances do not constitute a conflict of interest requiring disclosure under NRS 281A 420, and I do not believe they do either. However, in the interest of complete transparency, I wish to disclose that in the past, my law firm has performed legal work for Miles Construction. That legal work has not involved the contract which is involved in this agenda item, nor has it involved anything related to this agenda item. I have not been personally involved in the legal work my law firm has performed, and my law firm is not currently performing any legal work for Miles Construction. The judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship, and because there is not a disqualifying conflict of interest, I'm going to be voting on this matter as I'm required to do by NRS 281A 420 subsections 4B. Other disclosures?
I'm going to be a little shorter. NRS 281, 281A.420 requires me to disclose conflicts of interest. Item 10C on today's agenda affects my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of Miles Construction. I have a substantial and continuous business relationship with Bill Miles as I represent him in his personal real estate transactions. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this relationship, and because this is a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from voting on this matter.
And as the Ethics Committee has advised me, anytime the 8th of a cent sales tax monies might be expended, I need to disclose that I own a business, Adeles, that might financially benefit or be injured by the corridor project, and where the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation on behalf of all the citizens of Carson City will not be materially affected by the possible risks or benefits the corridor projects might have upon my financial interest in Adeles. And if there are any financial risks or benefits to my interest in Adeles, they are no greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business and profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter, and therefore, I can and will lawfully consider, participate, and vote in this matter pursuant to NRS 281A.420.
Any other disclosures? Seeing none, let's take up the item, see where we go. Okay?
This is a contract for Miles Construction. This is contract number 1415-134 for approval to provide CMR, Construction Management at Risk, Service, Construction Services for the Multi-Use Athletic Center through January 31st, 2016 for a not-to-exceed amount of $7,716,237.27. This is to be funded through the Quality of Life Fund and the Infrastructure Tax Fund. This contract is to provide the services, construction, and management for the delivery of the project based on a guaranteed maximum price contract to include construction, utility coordination, scheduling, procurement, and all ancillary for the project. If there's specific information on the project, Darren's here to discuss that. I passed out a page. This is not funded through grants, so I had marked the wrong funding sources, and I included that in a copy that I've just provided. Any questions?
Okay, let's hang around there, sit down, so you don't have to stand up all the time. We'll talk to Darren here for a little bit. Unless, Jim, you've got a question with Kim? Kim, come on back up.
The document that you just handed out?
Right.
Can you briefly describe what this is about?
This is the contract, it's page one of the contract, and on the contract, it's on the fourth paragraph down, where as contractors' compensation under this agreement does or does not utilize in whole or in part money derived from one or more federal grant funding sources, I had marked "does," and it is not incorrect, so I provided a new sheet and it says "does not."
Okay. Now, Darren, thank you. Go.
Should I say good morning every time? It's a great morning. We're really excited to be to this stage on this project. It's for some of us and others more than me, but it's a long time coming. A little bit of background, we went out, it's been a couple years ago now, decided that this project had made the most sense to go the CMAR process, and so, we solicited it, an RFP, to bring in qualified contractors. We had seven contractors submit through that process. We shortlisted them to three and performed interviews, and then ultimately decided on selecting Miles as our most qualified contractor. From that date till now, we've been working with Miles in the pre-construction phase, and in that, our goal there is to try and develop and design a project that we could build with the amount of funding that we had available. That's one of the reasons we went CMAR, because we knew this project would be really, really tight. It's been, you know, a good decision, a good process. There's been a lot of give and take throughout the last year and a half on this, but we feel like we have a good project moving forward, and we're excited to get to this stage. So, I'll answer questions as well as Rogers here for.
Okay. Board comments, questions? Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I'm kind of new to this process on this project as the new person on the board, and so, what I would like to discuss is the actual operation of the facility. And I know that there's been a lot of public discussion concerning the use of the facility, and how is it going to have the general public actually get an opportunity to use it, that it's not actually exclusive use for one organization? And so, I'd like to get clarification on the record concerning how we're going to use the facility. And then, I would also like to address the ongoing operational cost, so that the public is very clear that when we build this, what their ongoing commitment is for this project.
Sure, I'd be happy to try to answer those questions, and I'll say good morning for Darren and I both. But for the record, Roger Mulendorf, Parks and Recreation Director. I guess to take your questions in order, the first one is the, kind of refers to the joint use agreement that we have with the Boys and Girls Club. And I know there's a lot of questions out there about, is the use equitable among the two, you know, the two organizations, the two parties? And I believe it is very equitable. The joint use agreement's been brought to the board at least on two occasions, if not maybe three occasions. I know it's been approved by the board twice. But basically, what it does is it outlays the responsibilities of each organization as far as in terms of their responsibilities towards the facility, and it also specifies the use, kind of within general terms, that each organization will have for the facility. Typically, the way it's stated is that during the school year, the school months, nine months of school while school is in session, the Boys and Girls Club will be operating their after-school activities in that facility, in addition to their own facility. And so, they'll be in there from about 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Now, that leaves the city with the opportunity to program the building in those other hours. We can have, you know, basically programs from, you know, relatively like 6:00 in the morning to, you know, 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon, and then we can run our evening programs after 6:00 p.m. And those typically run to about 10:00 at night. A lot of our youth and adult sports activities would happen during that time. But we do have a clause in the joint use agreement that says that both parties agree to the concept of having consecutive use of the facility when practical. So, in other words, I think you're familiar with the design of the facility. We have several drop curtains that drop down from the ceiling, so we can divide that gymnasium into up to four separate spaces. So, conceivably, we could have two to four different, I guess really one to four different activities going on in that facility. And that gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of programming the facility. And I'm sure you're also aware that we have a suspended indoor walking track that we think is going to be very attractive. is gonna be very attractive to particularly maybe senior citizens, people who wanna walk inside the facility and kind of escape the elements outdoors. And our intention is to try to program that walking track so that it's available for quite a few hours during the course of the day. And so conceivably, while the Boys and Girls Club is having their activity, we may have, for instance, a senior citizen walk program going on in the walking track above, above their activity. Now, now, as we get into the summer, that changes a little bit, and it's actually a pretty nice operation, nice situation, because it dovetails with the use of our facility. Typically, our indoor activities slow down in the summertime because a lot of the youth that are involved in our indoor activities in the wintertime are geared towards little league, outdoor soccer-type activities. The Boys and Girls Club will be using the facility from about 7:00 a.m. in the morning to about 6:30 in the evening for their kind of summer camp activities during the summertime. That'd be Monday through Friday. But again, I want to reiterate that we have that agreement that to the extent possible we will have consecutive use, we have the option for consecutive use of the facility. So I hope that kind of answers the first question. I think the second question really was about, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just wanna back up a little bit, I'm sorry. So the hours of operation the Girls and Boys Club will be operating during the summer months are from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
That's correct.
Is public access still available?
Well, again, that gets back to what we talked about with, with an agreement to try to work towards consecutive or concurrent use of the facility. So in other words, to, to give you an example, let's say at 7:00 a.m. when they have their activities going on, and if we program an early morning walk program inside the building, you know, we will have conversations with the Boys and Girls Club about having our program going on concurrent with theirs. And I, and I guess I failed to mention that also according to the joint use agreement, we have a commitment that we're gonna meet at least quarterly with the Boys and Girls Club. Both parties will meet, and we'll set out the schedules for the next quarter.
The MAC itself, from, in the summer, from generally speaking?
7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m.
It's all Boys and Girls Club.
During, during the day. And then we'd have the evenings for park and rec activities, and we would have weekends for park and rec activities as well.
Thank you.
Roger, can I just? Sure.
He'll answer the, my other.
Yeah.
Roger, can you just elaborate for the record how tournament play, how your interaction with the Visitors Bureau, on what activities are brought in, how all of that is represented in this?
In fact, I failed to mention that. We have met with Joel Dunn from the Visitors Bureau, both parties, Boys and Girls Club and the Park and Recreation Department, to talk about how we can facilitate programming tournaments to bring people from outside the community into Carson City to use that facility. Again, this is really kind of a nice, nice opportunity because during the summer months, we have a lot of visitors from outside of Carson City coming here for tournaments and that type of thing, and motel rooms and hotel rooms and lodging are typically full because of those activities. Where we really need to fill the rooms is kind of in the shoulder season, in the winter and the fall. And we have talked to, we have kind of made an arrangement that Joel Dunn will meet with the Boys and Girls Club and the city at our quarterly meetings, and we will take a look at our calendars and schedules and see where we can work tournaments in as he is able to come up with tournaments. And so we have a spirit of cooperativeness that we're gonna try to accommodate not only our activities, our programs, and Boys and Girls Club, but also try to fit in tournaments where we can as well. We've kind of set aside that, just sort of in concept, that if we could have, you know, sort of shoot for maybe one weekend out of the month, per month, you know, that we could set aside for tournaments, but that's kind of, that's gonna really depend on what kind of a tournament schedule we have out there. And I think the next question was about budget, if there's no other questions about the use of the facility. Okay? There was a question about the operation and maintenance budget. We did, we, I should say, the board adopted a budget that was presented to them in the, in the plan for expenditures, and that was back in February 20th of 2014. And so the budget was approved at that time. It's $148,500 budget. That's for a 12-month budget. As you know, the, we're hoping that the MAC will be, the MAC will be open in December, so we're looking at probably this first year at least formulating a six-month budget to get us through the first part of the, of the first half of fiscal year ending '16. There is a question, I think, about how we're gonna manage it with the budget. We're looking at managing the MAC in the similar manner that we do the Community Center Gymnasium, and that it's not gonna be open necessarily from 6:00 a.m. in the morning till 10:00 o'clock at night, but it'll be open during that period of time as we have programs. And the reason we're doing that is, if you remember, originally in this project, we were looking at a recreation center type of concept. Typically, recreation centers are open all day long, which allows drop-in use. And recreation centers normally have a lot more amenities than a multi-athletic center would have, you know, such as weight rooms, exercise rooms, you know, those type of things. When we pared the project down, we really pared it down to a larger gymnasium with a walking track. And so there, there really isn't the need to have a whole lot of drop-in hours. It's more of a programmable facility, so it'll really only be open when we're having programs in there. Now, that's a little bit of a play in words, I guess, because what we can do is we can program drop-in use as well. In other words, we could have, again, using the example of walking, we could program some areas, some times of the day that it would be available for people to come in and do walking, or do some type of exercising, or we may have contracted classes in there like we do in the community center here, too. We'd program those hours. And as, as a program facility, those programs will actually be run by our Recreation Division. We will have program people, usually part-time people, will be in charge of conducting those programs, and the fees, or I guess the funding for the part-time people will be funded through the Recreation Division. And as you know, our programs, our goal is to recover 100% of our direct costs, and so those costs will be covered, you know, by the programs themselves. Now, addition to that, because we have a lack of office space in this facility, we're gonna move at least one of our Recreation Managers over to the MAC, and his, his office will be located in that facility.
So on the record, what you're telling me is you are not asking for staff for the MAC?
That is correct.
So you're not gonna come back next month when we put the budget together and ask for $100,000 in general fund for the MAC?
That is correct.
You're convinced that what was described to the public in the plan of expenditure, which has about, give or take $57,000 of general fund, and the rest is Boys and Girls Club, Quality of Life, and user fees, that you can live with that budget?
That is, that is correct. Now, what we hope is that as the economy improves in Carson City and sales tax revenues increase, we hope that the share of general fund support for the facility will decrease as sales tax revenues increase, and that the Quality of Life Fund will be able to take on a larger share of operating the facility.
And for the record, for the public, the Quality of Life was actually voted on by the people of Carson City, correct?
That's correct, back in 1996.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify that on the record, and the multi-use gym was one of the items in that ballot question that was articulated.
That is correct. Actually, the multi-use gym, or any of the projects were not on the ballot, but they were included, they were included in the question, in the informational ballot that was put out. And there was a, there was a list of probably about 20 projects that were anticipated to be funded, you know, first with the Quality of Life funding, and the, the multi-use gym was listed as one of those, listed as one of those projects. And actually, it's the last project to be funded out of that original list.
Okay.
And I guess in addition to that, it was always kind of the concept from the, early in the concept of the multi-use gym, and this predates me, so I'm, you know, I'm kind of just going what I've been told, and, and the research I've done in, in our files, that originally the MAC or the multipurpose gym was, was, the concept was that it would be built in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club.
Roger, just laboring on a little bit further, on the $148,000 yearly budget for the maintenance of it, and going back to what Supervisor Bagwell mentioned a little bit, is that is contributed from different parties? Is that correct, or is that just the city fund?
No, that is, that is from different parties. There's several different revenue sources that are involved in that. Again, the, the two chief revenue sources for the budget would be the general fund and, and Quality of Life.
Does that, does this budget also, does the Visitors Bureau contribute anything from the maintenance and upkeep?
No, it's not included in there. And that brings up another, I guess, another issue that probably needs to be addressed, at least in the future. Our inter-local agreement with the Visitors Bureau does not include the MAC as, as a project, or I guess as a facility in the inter-local agreement. We may look, we may be wanting to talk about in the future adding that, amending that agreement and adding that in there. That'll be a decision for the board, I think, in the future.
So do we have to have an agenda item on that, or is it something staff will bring back?
That is something we'll bring back in the future.
Parks and Rec will bring back?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Good afternoon, public comment? Public, anybody? Mr. Russell, good morning.
Roger just dumped everything I was gonna talk about on the floor.
You want your notes?
No. Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment. Roger hit everything pretty much on the head. With the joint use agreement that's already been approved, what I'd point out to you guys in addition to the spirit of cooperation that's built into the agreement is we've also built in a very specific right of first refusal, which means that at any time, we're not using any portion of the MAC. The city has the ability to program whatever they want in there. It doesn't sit empty. That's why we have the meetings, because if we are on a field trip on a Thursday or a Friday and there's nobody in the gym, we obviously don't want it sitting empty. And so the city has the right of first refusal to go in there and program during those times. The other thing I would point out is that the, this is a really exciting time for all the youth in Carson City and for Carson City in general. This is a project that's been years in the making, and this next step is gonna be an amazing step for Carson City, for the club, for all of us. The agreement that we've entered, or one of the agreements that we've entered, allows the city joint use of our facilities as well. And I always wanna highlight that because our facilities aren't done. If we're successful in expanding our facilities to include a teen center, the city's gonna have the ability to have joint use of those facilities as well. So this really is the definition of cooperation between a nonprofit charitable organization in the city, and I'm really excited to see it go forward.
Ryan, are there kids who use the Boys and Girls Club from Carson City or from elsewhere?
They're from Carson City primarily.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments from the board before I open up public comment? Public, go ahead. I already opened up the public comment. Open up again.
Scattered notes everywhere here, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board of Supervisors, for the record, Joel Dunn, Carson City Visitors Bureau. Good morning. Just wanted to give a little bit of history, although I've been separated from this project for a couple of years with the new hat that I wear to serve our community. Certainly, I think that there's a few people in the room that have been here throughout the entire process, and I would be one of those. So wanted to give just a little bit of history on the project. When we started the Question 18 ballot, the entire community stepped up to make sure that there was an awareness of the impact that this project, or the project related to Question 18, would have on the Quality of Life or Carson City. If any of you remember the knock on the door at your homes in regard to the passage of Question 18, strong likelihood is that it would have been a member of one of our swim teams or our competitive swimming community, possibly one of our members of our YSA, but more likely, it would have been a member of the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club was part of the process at the beginning, and as such, they were going to receive a gym, one court attached to whatever facility they were building in the future to meet their programmatic needs. The process went a lot of different directions throughout the, the time, or through the passage of Question 18. I had an opportunity, wearing the hat, serving the community as Operations Manager for Recreation, to attend two different design schools in regard to indoor recreation facilities. The first in St. Louis. In St. Louis, the buildings were really constructed towards what I thought kind of mirrored where Carson City was and maybe the future of programmatic use, which was big, large, open-space community gymnasium. Happened to be in St. Louis that their programmatic needs were really geared around team sports, track and field, gymnastics, not a lot of fluff, just a lot of people actively engaged in the facility. Few years later, had an opportunity to also attend a design school as part of the National Parks and Recreation Association in Colorado, a much different direction when it came to comprehensive recreation facilities. These were more towards, I would say, lodges. They were, they had fluff. They had coffee shops and salad bars, and they were beautiful. They absolutely were stunning. And really, that's where, if you looked at the trends in building these facilities, that's where most communities were going with their new facilities. Coming back, I really thought that we would kind of assess all of that and go in one direction, and I thought we'd be going to the right and looking at our programmatic needs. But I can tell you that Parks and Rec took the opportunity to take our elected officials, Parks and Rec member, board members, members of our community on tours of these different facilities. I think they toured two different states, I think Utah and Colorado. And during that process, the majority of all of those people came back and said, hey, listen, we, we really wanna go towards the comprehensive recreation facilities. Went through the charrette process of identifying where we would build that rec facility in Carson City, what best would meet the needs. During that process, as everyone knows, there was a lot of different opinions. I think that the first one we looked at on the operational efficiency side was to attach it to our existing aquatics facility. Made sense for the programmatic use and efficiencies in the future, but we could not afford to attach it to our facility based on some of the issues with the site plan. Went through the process, and as you know, we kind of jumped around, and ultimately now we've, we've decided that the site in Carson City that best serves the community is with the Boys and Girls Club. We did, though, have to throughout that process, kind of come back to that right side based on the cost of construction. We ultimately had a set budget. We came back with what was referred to in the community as the Taj Mahal and everything because people weren't aware of where recreation facilities were going, and we started lending ourselves back towards indoor recreation, large, open space, and that's where we're at today. I can say that it wasn't an easy process. Throughout that process, I remember testifying in front of the Park and Rec Commission, we took the time as staff to do a needs assessment survey in May of 2010, knowing that there was a direction by the Parks and Rec Commission to say, listen, if we're gonna value engineer this project down, let's eliminate two, possibly three of the courts, and let's still have the splash pads and the, you know, the elevated walking tracks, and let's have climbing walls and racquetball courts, and we can forego the, the sport court stuff. And I really knew that that wasn't the direction that we should go in Carson City based on the hat I was wearing, which was programmatic use of the facility. Testified in front of the Park and Rec Commission based on that needs assessment survey. Give you a little history on the needs assessment survey. We took the time to reach out to the community, both online, Spanish and English version. We also did a couple of different community meetings to where members of the residents of the community that did not have the time to take an online survey could come in in the morning, also come in in the evening. The goal was to create statistical data that mirrored the demographics of Carson City, and we did that. I think we were actually within 1% of the current census data for Carson City. So now I knew we had some pretty strong statistical data to move forward based on what the community was saying they wanted to see us have in a recreation facility. There were some surprises during that process. My eyes were opened up to the fact that the number-one recreational opportunity that the community felt we weren't providing them was performing arts, followed by, actually, I would say in the top 15, there were only three that were not associated with a court, with a basketball court, with a volleyball court, with a sport court. Those three being aquatic fitness, which we're able to meet the needs of now with our, with our swimming pool. The other was performing arts, which was number one, as I mentioned, and I know that that's in the process of Question 18, and we're continuing to expand that. that's in the process of Question 18, and we're continuing to expand that. The other was kind of a surprise. It was an indoor rifle and pistol range, which I think, I don't know, there may be just a few in the room, know that in the original design of this building, that would have been just below us. So, and that was an ad alternate at the time that was eliminated. So we've moved forward in that process, and we are back through to where truly that needs assessment survey is going to be able to be applied to this facility with four courts. Now, we have to provide a use matrix. Is that going to be enough? Is four courts truly gonna be enough? It's still surprising to me that the community and some of our elected officials are unaware of what the Recreation Division uses for their programmatic use in Carson City. It's not just this gym that's attached to the facility here. They also have a joint use agreement with the school district. They are the primary user of the gyms at both Carson Middle School, which is two courts, at the time, one court at Eagle Valley, now two courts. In addition to that, I know that throughout the last 20 years, I scheduled youth basketball practices in lunchrooms at the elementary schools, and we utilized every square inch we could possibly get. We also have been one of the primary users of the Stewart facility. The Stewart Gym is one of the longest gyms in Carson City, I think actually built before this one, which was 6970, and...
I think it was before that, because I played basketball there. It might have been an older gym.
I, I played basketball, but it was a little bit later, but yeah. Well, I didn't really.
Yeah, Supervisor Shirk mentioned, it was the 20s while I was there.
Yeah. I got my, were required two minutes a quarter that I, during my youth basketball experience, but, so, moving, moving through that, we've utilized all of these different facilities. So we had to take in consideration in the use matrix of where we were going to be five, 10, 20 years from now. Once again, this was back in 2010. I put together a use matrix, which I'm sure Recreation still has on file that you could look at, and I went back to 1986. If we're gonna look at the next 20 years, let's look at the previous 20 years. Took the opportunity to not only look at indoor recreation, but all recreation in Carson City. So we looked at youth sports programs as far back as the data could go for the Youth Sports Association. That was AYSO Soccer and Little Egan Girls Softball, everything. We looked at registration numbers from 1986 moving forward and put them into charts so we could see where we could project we would be five, 10, 20 years from now. I can tell you that if we would have moved where Parks and Recreation Commission was kind of guiding staff to go in minimizing those courts, we would not be able to meet the needs of our community five, 10, even probably three years from now. Four courts, I can tell you in the use matrix that we put together, based on that needs assessment survey, and that's including new programs such as the futsal that we've introduced since then, that is the largest participated sport, I think, in Carson City, all the way to pickleball for our active aging and a lot of new programming, four courts will meet our needs. Four courts would meet the needs for future programming, that up-and-down flow that you'll see in your primary sports of basketball. You know, we even included batting cages and softball cages. So the short of it is, I can say from the hat I used to wear, I do believe that we're back on track where we need to be. The primary players that were part of passing Question 18 are going to get what they were told that they were gonna get, and that's not only just the members that are in the room, but that's the public. The public's going to get a multi-athletic center that's gonna meet the needs of their indoor recreation for hopefully the years to come. There was, there was some questions that came up in regard to now my new hat with the Visitors Bureau. No. Right now, I can tell you that there has not been a discussion in regard to how we would provide any funding towards ongoing maintenance. I can tell you that that inter-local agreement right now has been very beneficial for this community. I think that everyone in this room is aware that sports tourism brings in 20-plus million dollars a year. We're upwards of nearly 80,000 visitors from outside of the area. Roger touched on where that need is now, and that needs in our winter months, our shoulder season. This, this building and the inter-local agreement with the city, the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, we'll all be able to sit down at the table and make that work so that we can utilize the facility. Is there limitations? Absolutely. There's always gonna be limitations. There's four courts. Now, I can tell you that I can look at basketball and volleyball tournaments that'll bring in roughly 24 teams, based on how you set up the tournament, eight o'clock start time all the way through championships on a Sunday, 24, maximum 26 teams. With that, you're looking at about a 350, upwards of maybe a $400,000 economic impact every time we bring a tournament in, and that's new visitor spending. That's not using a multiplier or anything. That is just true dollars spent by these visitors. So yes, it's going to be a very beneficial impact to our community. Is it enough? If I was standing in front of you and you were building a 15-court facility, I would tell you, you know what? No, it's not enough. If you build me a 20-court facility, I'll do more. If you, so no. But will it work? Yes. Limitations we'll have to overcome. There are some limitations on seating. Going back to the whole design process and the schooling that I went through for designing recreation facilities, I can tell you in Colorado, when I walked into the first comprehensive recreation facility, walked in and saw, this was the lodge, actually aptly named the lodge, it looked like a lodge, they had one basketball court, and they had no spectator seating. They brought in portable chairs or just benches along the side, and I know that that certainly wasn't the way that we use our programs in Carson City. Even though I only got to play my two minutes in youth and basketball, I know that my grandparents were there and my aunts and uncles would come and watch, and I had two minutes of fame, that wasn't what we needed. Now, could we use more seating in the facility? Certainly. But is it adequate? Yes. When you look at the tournament, you're gonna work with your tournament directors. When you set up your programs, you're gonna make sure that the flow of your spectators and your participants, you're getting them out for a couple of hours, getting back into the facility so we can make it work. The lodging properties will have a responsibility when we have some of these tournaments. They're going to have responsibility and opportunity both in creating some transportation. If I had a lodging property, I certainly would be buying a van so that I could take 10 members of a basketball team and their families back and forth to this facility so I could get them to stay in my property. So I think there's certainly some challenges that we need to overcome with the facility. Is it needed? Yes. Is it time? Absolutely, yes. We've, we've gone through this way too long in the community. We, we've spent a lot of money. We're gonna continue. We're going to build a facility that this community needs. Back to the final on the partnership of the Visitors Bureau. You're using tax revenue to build this facility. I think everyone's aware that over 30% of all taxable sales in this community come from visitors. So are we playing our role? Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joel. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? All right. I don't see any, so we'll bring it back here, discuss, see where we go. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Shoot.
I move to approve contract number 1415-134 pursuant to NRS 338.169 with miles construction to provide C-Mar construction services for the multi-use athletic center, known as the MAC, through January 31, 2016, for a not-to-exceed amount of $7,716,237.27 to be funded from the Quality of Life Park Improvements New Gymnasium Account as provided in fiscal year 2014-2015 and fiscal year 2015-2016.
Is there a second? I'll second that for just go. Motion and second and discussion. Go. Jim, Supervisor Shirk.
You know, I think this is a great facility. I think it's a need for the community. I think it'd be an asset to the Boys and Girls Club and to the public. In general, I'm, I stand behind this. I think it's a great project for the community. But in the essence, that we're using the new 1/8 of a cent sales tax, I cannot vote in favor of this for that reason. So I will maintain my position of saying nay.
Go.
Okay. Well, I, I guess that leaves me. This is a very difficult decision. And I'm gonna vote yes, because the people supported and voted on the Quality of Life funds. And that is the only reason that I'm going to support this. It's because 75% of the funding was approved by the people, and I stand by what the people wanted. And I feel that they should have gotten to vote on the 1/8 cent sales tax also, but 75% of this is being funded by the Quality of Life, and I believe the community will support this project. So I'll vote yes.
Anybody else before going second round? Supervisor Shirk, go.
I understand Lori's position, but again, we voted on the Quality of Life, correct, but we didn't vote on double taxation. We didn't vote on the 1/8 sales tax. That didn't go to the public. The public had no say in that. So again, I, I too think this is a great structure and building, and will provide the necessary means for the community. But again, I stick to the fact that this is double taxation. We didn't vote on it. It was, it was not put to the people. And so the Quality of Life should fund this 100%. So I'll, I'm still gonna say nay.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Four, three to one. Three to one. Okay. One abstention, Supervisor Bonkowski abstention. Okay. We're now gonna take up item 10 Delta, and then we'll take a break.
This is a contract to deter, staff is asking for the Board of Supervisors to determine that Armack Construction LLC is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338, and to award contract 1415-124 Carson City Landfill Entrance Repair to Armack Construction for a base bid amount of $139,611 and a contingency amount of $13,961. The total contract amount should be $153,572 instead of the $153,302 that's on the Board Action Form. This project is to pave the entrance and repair, they're gonna remove and replace existing concrete and asphalt at the inbound and outbound entrances, and the scales at the Carson City landfill, as well as drainage improvements, including abandoning the existing drain lines. There were nine bidders for this contract, and as you can see in the bid summary, the lowest bidder was not who staff is recommending, because the lower bidder did not fill out their bid document appropriately. There is a section under subcontractors that particularly requests the contractors to list themselves as a subcontractor doing 5% or more of the work. And the document is, that section of the document is highlighted in yellow stating the NRS, and this company did not do a protest based on that because they knew they had filled out the bid document incorrectly. There's any questions on the bid process or the contract? I'd be happy to answer those. If you have questions on the project, Danny Rodd is here to answer the questions.
Okay. Board comments or questions? Public comment? I don't see any. We ready?
I move to determine that Armack Construction LLC is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute, Chapter 338, and to award contract number 1415-124 titled Carson City Landfill Entrance Repair to Armack Construction LLC for a base bid amount of $139,611 and a contingency amount not to exceed $13,961 for a total contract amount of $153,572 to be funded from the Property Services Landfill Asphalt Repaving Accounts in the Capital Projects Fund as provided in the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, seconded by Supervisor Shirk on the motion, discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay carried unanimously. Okay. We are now gonna be in recess for about 10 minutes, maybe 10 o'clock, 10, 5 after.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to call a meeting of the board supervisors back to order. We're going to take up 11 Alpha. This is city manager. Talk about findings and recommendations of the employee efficiency study. Nick, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, on December 4th, when you accepted the recommendations that were contained in the efficiency study, directed me to come back and report the progress of the implementation of those items. As part of your board packet, management response to those recommendations are contained. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning any or all of these items.
Nick, on page 2 of 9, item number 4, management response to recommend finding number 4, lack of resources to address maintenance backlog. How going forward do we make sure that this process is continuous and not a one-time event? What is your plan for that? Evaluating contracts, making recommendations to the board in the coming months.
Could you state the question again? I don't understand. If the question is, how do we get at the backlog in our deferred maintenance? Or is it a process question? How do we better address the needs going forward?
Your response says that we're going to address some needs, and we'll evaluate contracts. We'll make recommendations to the board. I just want to know how we're going to, how are we going to do that on a continuous process going forward and not let this fall through the cracks in future years? So what I want to make sure is that as we go forward on maintenance, that we continue to assess maintenance and add to that every year and not just do it as a one-time fix, I guess is what I'm saying.
Because I, for the record, Nick, Providence Finance Director. I believe I kind of addressed that item, and we do that every year. I mean, we do the analysis during the budget process, and we do it throughout the year, the needs assessment, and I think Darren could probably, you know, back me up on that. So the problem is, is we didn't have the money.
I know that we do the CIP priority list.
Correct.
What I'm saying is, how do we put into a sustainable maintenance plan going forward? Because it's not a matter of we can't afford it. It's a matter of we're not making it a priority, in my opinion.
Okay. That's fair.
So that's really what I'm looking for, is what are we going to do to institute a process or a policy, just like we did with the wastewater treatment facility, to fund a sustainable long-term maintenance program? And I know that that's up to us to do that, but we need to work with the both of you to do that. So maybe instead of a question, I should just say that that's a concern of mine, and I think it's something that I would really like to see us work on and make a high priority.
And I think we all concur 110% with that. If you look at not only the deferred maintenance on our facilities, but if you look at the equipment, if you look at the rolling stock, especially for public safety, there's a considerable overhang in terms of what the requirements are and what the funds, at least to date, that have been applied to address those deficiencies have been. So yeah, I think all of us agree that this needs, especially as revenues look to recover, at least over the next, you know, few years, this is definitely an area that needs to get greater prioritization and greater attention in terms of resources.
And in an item that will be coming up, it's now been inserted into the strategic plan that we'll be addressing later, so hopefully that will make it a little easier for us to address it and make it a priority. Under finding number 15, under fire, which is on page 5 of 9, I had a question on item number 2, under management response. It says, "With these positions filled, we'll have a comprehensive review of all assigned duties to ensure that the correct division of assignments is in place." And my question, or if I could just get a clarification, why would we do that after we fill the position rather than before we fill the position?
Hi. For the record, Bob Schrems. I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The question is due, or the finding is, "Due to resource constraints, not all activities in the fire department are performed in a timely manner, and the recommendation is, consider strategically allotting additional resources to meet the fire department's expanding workload." Under item 2, under management response, it says, "With these positions filled," and they're talking about reclassifying the battalion chief to deputy chief, and reclassifying a part-time clerical position to a full-time position. So with these positions filled, we'll have a comprehensive review of all assigned duties to ensure the correct division of assignments is in place. And my question is, wouldn't we normally do that before we fill the positions? And isn't that the justification for the change in positions, rather than doing that after the fact? Because to me, I read this, and it says, "Well, give us two more people, and then we'll do an assessment and see if we have the proper job descriptions and allocations of work for those positions." So where am I missing something?
Okay, well, I think what happened here is the Moss-Adams study, for one, was here before I took this position. However, a couple of years ago, Chief Giomi tried to split up the division chiefs and battalion chiefs and kind of do what we're doing here, but there was a monetarily an issue that it wasn't going to work. And when we've been looking at it together for the last month and a half about where we can go with that, and we have those divisions and workload set up for you, and it stated, you're going to see it here in about, when I come up here, that will talk specifically to that issue of where we're going with that and how we're splitting up all those things and with those positions. And we're moving folks around. We probably, you know, we're not asking for additional, but we're splitting up the workload, as we will. And that should answer that for you. And we're looking at, that's what we use some of your issues from the Moss-Adams study and said, "This is why we want to do these things, to take care of that workload as it's stated in here."
Great. Then I'll hold off on that one until the next two items, and you can address it in those.
Perfect.
Go next. Nick, one of the questions that I had was on the item number 3, under management response, "Staff will prepare a future board agenda item with regards to the boards, committees, and commissions to see if any can be eliminated. Do you know how soon that will be agendized?"
Well, I think in an ideal world, I would like to get some guidance, frankly, on if, what I'd like to do is to put together an agenda item so that we can have this public discussion, and I could get guidance from the board as, because most of these boards and commissions and committees have at least one of the board of supervisors who sit on it. So I would like to kind of hear your guidance on which ones that you think are important and which ones are not, as opposed to me spending a lot of staff time just looking at every board's, bringing that list to you, and then having a broad debate about it, and who knows what would happen. So I guess I'd ask, how would you like us to do this? I mean, I could do it that way, but I think it might be better to get some advanced guidance from the board, from the board of supervisors itself, as to what you think is important and not.
Well, you know, to my way of thinking, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I would think that, you know, brief descriptions of kind of the mission statements of each one of these boards and committees brought before us so that we can discuss that, and being on various boards, understand where perhaps we might be able to combine forces, you know, not necessarily eliminate, but combine so that you're reducing DA time and all the rest of that for all these committees.
Okay, so then, we could potentially look at, I think March 19th is our second meeting in March. I could look to bring back an agenda item like that, so I'll list every board, we'll have the mission statements, we'll have the board of supervisor member who sits on that board, we'll also have a staff recommendation, we'll talk about it. And then, if we could kind of reduce the list, so to speak, that would probably make that process go a little bit easier.
And then also on that, though, will you add the number of times that the committee meets? Because I may be interested in looking and streamlining the number of meetings, which would also help relieve some work burden of staff and clerical time. So it may be, condensing the meetings may also be an effective tool.
Okay.
I have a question for the board, too. Sorry, Karen. I have a question for the board, and that is, I think several, if not many, of the boards, committees, and commissions are required by statute. I don't know that we necessarily need to have you bring any of those back to us. So that's a question for us up here, but my opinion is that we only need to see the ones that are not required by statute.
Okay. Good point.
But by statute, we still need to know how often they have to meet by statute. So I still think you need to clarify each board, even by statute, when they have to meet, so we can see that. Maybe it's once a year. I don't even know that. Maybe it's once a month. I don't know.
Okay.
And then the other question I have, and maybe this is a Nick question, both Nick questions. We have needed a grants coordinator position for a while since Heidi left. Is this going to be part of the budgeting process going forward?
I mean, we could, we could take a look at it. I agree with you, but again, you know, the funds, I mean, we're just in the process now of compiling all the expense data and the revenue data, and I'll have a better idea probably in a couple of weeks about, you know, some of the, you know, how it looks. So I'll make sure that Mr. Morano and myself will get together, take a look, and, you know, we could be bringing forward a supplemental request for that position. We'll note that. Okay.
Yeah, on that same line, I see the need for the grants coordinator as well, because on page 7 of 9, we've already put in for, submitted a request to add an engineering position, and if I had to choose between the two, I'd choose the grant coordinator. So I just wanted to point that out. But going through this, I had a couple of questions. On page 2 of 9, item 5, it says, "The Technology Governance Committee." Who is that? Who does this consist of?
The Technology Governance Committee exists. It meets, it's part of, it's an adjunct to the Internal Finance Committee. The IFC is the finance director, the HR director, the district attorney, and myself. The, when we bring in our IT director, we reconvene as a technology committee, or the Technology Governance Committee. So I mean, that committee already exists. Again, with all due respect to Moss-Adams, who did this study, this was a very high-level study, if you remember. So this committee actually exists. It meets, it functions, we consider different items. Some of those have come in front of you after they've been approved by that committee.
Mine's just for clarification. I have a few more questions. On item 6, the last sentence, it says, "We anticipate adding additional technology." Is that equipment? And if so, is there any idea of what that would cost in funding?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Shirk. What was the number?
Number 6, the last sentence in the response, "We anticipate adding additional technology."
Well, I think if you look at this item as part of our, as part of the lean process, I'm going to have the team take a look at our knowledge management and how we actually conduct that. I would anticipate as part of it, it could include a technology piece. It's not going to be a big piece in terms of cost. What I would prefer to see, just off the top of my head, to address what would fill our knowledge management requirements, would be something like a Microsoft SharePoint platform, if you've ever seen that. platform, if you've ever seen that or been part of an organization that uses SharePoint. It's very intuitive, it's easy to use, it's easy for every city department to have its own SharePoint site. This is not public-facing, this is internal city information that is managed and is available in a collaborative manner. So something, for example, like Microsoft SharePoint, I think, would address not only the requirement, but it would be something that'd be very cost-effective for us to implement as well.
And then, on page three of nine, item 10, the Public Information Officer, the Business Development Manager will further develop communication strategies and procedures. And that just goes along with the technology of what we just mentioned, that it'll all kind of tie together?
Yeah, that's correct. And I would also like to point out the last sentence in that, in that response. We do have trained PIOs in the event of an emergency, but the way that I look at it, my personal philosophy is, every department director is himself or herself, his or her own PIO. I don't believe we need to hire additional PIOs. I believe our overall communication strategy is something that we need to develop, but I believe that the actual department directors, for example, are the ones that, you know, in the event of some type of infectious disease outbreak, the community doesn't want to see a PIO. They want to see the Carson City Health and Human Services Director, or our Public Health Officer, speaking in front of the cameras. So we're going to, we're going to enhance their ability to do that, but I frankly don't see the need, and it would be, it would be pretty far down the list to actually hire a PIO to perform that function, you know, for the entire city.
On page four of nine, item 12, when it goes on to say, the business development manager moved to the city and so forth, and he'll be working on economic development projects and other initiatives. Can you give me any examples of any previous economic development projects?
Yeah, he actually is the city's interface for two important functions when it comes to economic development. Number one, he's our primary interface with the Northern Nevada Development Authority, N-NDA, in their business development plan that you've approved. He's the person that I have tasked to be not only the city representative as required, but also he is the one who I've tasked to ensure that N-NDA is meeting the requirements, if you remember, that they laid out to you in performance of their business development plan. So that's one important function in that bucket. The other important function is, he does facilitate, and he maintains the relationship with the Small Business Development Authority. He provides counseling, he provides professional support to local residents who are in the process of starting a business. He provides kind of the one-stop solution to be able to get them the information they need and to get in touch. I mean, he's not actually the one that does a business plan, for example, for them, but he'll be able to put them in touch with professionals who could help them do that. He helps guide them through the permit process and so on, so that, you know, we are enabling small business development in the community. So that, they're kind of the two big functions under that one bucket that he performs.
Wouldn't the Adams Hub do the same similar tasks as that?
Yeah, I think the difference is, the Adams Hub, they focus on what's known as a scalable business. So if you look at, if you look at a technology startup, for example, that would be a business that could grow in terms of scale from, you know, maybe one or just a few employees with either an idea, or a product, or a new application, where that could grow and be a scalable business. That's where the Adams Hub is focused on, those type of businesses. What Michael Salaga focuses on from the city side are the non-scalable, things like, you know, the local resident who wants to start selling her own salsa, for example. We have, you know, there's a whole process to go through, not only from the licensing part, but developing the business plan, something like that, or someone who is going to start a new restaurant, or maybe open a new car wash, you know, they're non-scalable businesses. They're not going to, you know, we're not looking at the next Cisco or Apple computer. We're looking at a restaurant or a family-owned business.
And would that be coming back to the board of how this has been productive, how many businesses have been going through this or opened up through this process? Could that be something that the board would be getting a report on?
Sure, I mean, I could have them do a report. I know, because now he works next to me, he probably has two or three people a day who he's providing counseling for.
On page five of nine, item 17, isn't this similar to, or the process similar to that lean, like a program that we just, was approved by the board? Isn't this similar? Wouldn't that be the same function?
If the question is on succession planning, is that your?
Yeah, the city lacks successful planning strategies to address retirement turnover, isn't that where we're training staff in that lean program that was, we just pushed through? Isn't that similar to what this is?
Yeah, not really. Succession planning is something, and we're deeply involved in it now, is to be able to provide the, you know, kind of the phased plan. We've got, for example, a number of very senior directors and managers who will shortly be leaving, so being able to have an effective plan as to not only their replacement, but more importantly, as you go down in the organization, the effect on that department, and how the management, as well as the supervisor roles are filled in the future. It's not really a lean management.
I just want to clarify, thank you.
So on this overall report, I noticed that the sheriff actually, besides his response, actually indicated that the items were closed in his mind, that this is his final report on these particular subjects, which I like. So I don't see that what items are going to remain open in the remainder of the report that would either go through the audit subcommittee that we have, or you're going to come back with reports. What methodology, and which one of these remain open?
Well, I mean, pending your direction, my intent is, at the completion of this report, whatever items that we have, for example, if we're going to look at a grants coordinator, if that ever comes back in front of the board as a new position, then at that point, we'll bring it back. I don't intend to bring the efficiency study, per se, back up to do a
Another report.
To do a status update on it. If we do bring, for example, the grant coordinator position up, obviously, we'll point out, this was an item that was covered in the efficiency study, we looked at it in the budgeting process, and we think, you know, we think we do have a funding strategy for this position, and we'd like to present it to you for your approval. I could envision things like that happening, but I don't envision another status update across the board on all these items. If that answered your question.
A little bit.
Okay.
So then, let me look at a couple of the items that we maybe do want to keep on a radar screen and keep out there and not close the item. Let me go with that, then. So on item number six, it indicates that the recommendation is knowledge management needs and develop a comprehensive technology strategy that includes a citywide records retention policy. So I'd like to address the records retention policy. Do we not have a citywide document that indicates our records retention? Is it just done by department instead of pulled together as a citywide document?
Yeah, on knowledge management, I'd like to get back, that is, this is one of the, this is one of the processes and functions that we are going to look at as part of a kaizen event, as part of our lean. So this is something very important to me, being able to collect all the information that is out there and be able, and have it available as required.
So you'll leave this one as an open item, is what you're saying, and do a kaizen event, and then produce a citywide document that actually is on file for records retention? Is that the gist of what I?
Yeah, not only a document, but it'll be, it'll be a policy, it'll be a process, and it'll be a system to help us do knowledge management.
Melanie Bruketa, Human Resources Director, we actually already have the document in place, because it's a state document that's required by state law. So the kaizen event will take that document and create more of a process so that departments know exactly when they should be
Destroying.
Right, destroying the records.
Thanks, because I think that's a huge issue coming from other government myself, is, you know, you'd find records that were 75 years old, because no one ever knew how to purge a record. And so I think that's an important one. And then, on item number 11, the clerk recorder, the recommendation indicates that we should fully utilize the city systems, and the response, I'm not quite sure, are you indicating that you do use the city systems there, Sue?
Sue Meriwether, if you're speaking regarding the billing, the HTE, yes, she does use that system, but she also uses a manual system, so she could keep track on, for her own good.
Well, I'm trying to understand what the recommendation itself dealt with, to make sure that we're addressing the actual recommendation.
Right. My understanding is that, that they didn't think that we were using HTE, and we are.
Okay, so you think it wasn't a fully understood process?
For the record, HTE stands for?
Some tracking of expenditure system.
HTE, you know, I'm not really familiar with it, it's
It's a proprietary application that we use to manage a lot of our financial processes.
Okay, and then, the last one that I have, since everyone took all the other ones, is on the treasurer's office, finding number 27. I have to assume that this will be an open item that we will be discussing on parking enforcement. So are we going to wait and work with the downtown businesses in the entire remodel project to determine a methodology for parking enforcement? So are we going to keep this one open to meet that need?
Well, I don't want to speak for the treasurer, but one of the items we looked at, because our current parking enforcement officer has put in his retirement, would be to replace him with a couple of part-time employees. I've personally gone to the Downtown Business Association, I've talked to them about parking a couple of times. There's no consensus as to what the downtown business owners really want. You've got, on one end, a group, generally people like salon owners who have clients that tend to linger longer than two hours, casino operators, they want to see parking greater than two hours. Then you have, you know, kind of the restaurant owner on the other end of the continuum, who wants a big turnover, so they want to keep it two-hour parking. Some want just absolutely free parking. So there's really no, I don't, I don't know, and I'm not confident at all, based on what I've already done, that we'd ever get, you know, a consensus among the business owners as to what they really want. So in light of that, my recommendation would be, we keep our current ordinance what it is, and we do it with a couple of part-time parking enforcement officers. That would cut down considerably the cost from our one full-time employee, who was really, he was Y-coded, which meant he was at the very top of the pay scale, because he had worked for the city for quite a long time. So we'll be able to cut our costs down just by going with a couple of part-time parking enforcement officers.
If I could just add, Lee's going to have a conversation with the Cav District, because you know those discussions will start, and so parking is one of the issues on the agenda for him to discuss.
Okay, because I would definitely like to create a cost-effective program, because currently, you know, we're spending more in enforcement than we're generating, so I would definitely like to be a part of the conversation on this program to make it cost-neutral.
Yes, ma'am.
I know there are a lot of lobbyists out there who would pay a lot of money just to have the ability to not get a ticket. So for the next three months, if you want to do that, you can adopt an emergency ordinance that says, hey, for a grand, you can park anywhere.
And I think we should, we should title it the No Lawyer Left Behind Act.
No lawyer left behind, man, no lobbyist left behind. I'm sorry, Jim, go.
Yeah, on items to remain open, I want to bring up a few items, maybe. Number four is the, that'll remain open regardless, right? Because that's in the progress, we're in the, we're still developing that, so that remains open, number four. Correct?
Well, I mean, that'll remain open, you know, forever.
I know that, but we're saying closed, so I just want to make sure this is ongoing, it's all the time.
Respectfully, I never said closed.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I never said closed. We're going to continue to work these items. What I said was, I don't intend to come back to provide a status report on the employee efficiency study.
I misunderstood you, I apologize.
No, no.
Another one I'd like to see remain open is that number seven, the possibility of hiring the grants coordinator. That'll remain open as well, correct? A possibility of hiring one?
Yes, we'll continue to look at that position. But again, this was a very high-level study. I frankly dispute the finding that the city is missing grant opportunities, but we'll take a look at that position.
Nick, what's happening on the second floor of the brick with, when the move happens?
Mr. Mayor, that's an excellent question, and I think for everyone's information, what we're going to do is take the permit center that is currently on the second floor, if you remember, you kind of have to go up a very steep, narrow set of stairs to get to the permit center. That is almost 100% of the public traffic in that building is going in for the permit center. So I'm going to move them down on the first floor, I'm going to expand the footprint that they have, expand the counter area, provide greater public access and greater customer service, frankly, for the permit center. That will give the ability for the average citizen, for contractors, they'll have more room to lay their plans out, it'll be a much better work environment, and I think it'll provide, in the end, a much greater level of customer service to that particular community. So
What happens to the space upstairs, is what I'm asking? And the reason I ask that is, I got a call the other night and said, hey, you know, what are you doing on the brick? Because we, you know, there are a lot of people who like to use that, the brick conference room for meetings or whatever, and so I didn't know what, if that's, if there's space going to still be available for doing something like that upstairs or not, or what are we doing?
Well, the conference rooms are on the first level, and the big one, Conference Room A, will remain, that will remain a public, a public conference room. The only restriction that I've placed on it is really based on a security consideration, and not security in terms of, you know, violence, but just from pilferage, is that the publicly is, can, the public can continue to use it during work hours. After work hours, there needs to be a city employee that's either part of it, or that is going to sponsor that particular is going to sponsor that particular group.
That answers the question.
And we've made other spaces available for the ones that can't meet that requirement. The sheriff, for example, has very graciously kept the Ormsby Room available so that groups are not locked out of that public meeting space.
Good. Thank you. That helped, that's helpful. Thank you. All right, other board comments? Anybody? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? Okay, I don't see any. Let's take a motion and see where it goes.
Non-action. Just report, just, just report.
Yeah, see, I think it's, that's what we've got here now. I'm not certain that we really have to take an action on it, but let's just do a motion to accept the report and go on rather than do that, because that'll solve some of the issues on leaving things open or not or closed. Laura, you want to try it?
Sure.
I move to accept the report as submitted by the city manager.
On a motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Passed. All right, let's take up, let me see where I am now, hold on. Strategic plan components?
Correct.
Eleven, Bravo.
I'm sorry, good morning, Mr. Strankis. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
I got me, I apologize.
The Board of Supervisors.
Multitasking up here, and I forgot to multitask you.
That's all right, I wasn't sure if I was waiting for you or you waiting for me.
All right, all right.
Mark Staranker from Moss Adams, your internal auditor. I, I would just add to, to the previous item. So, that's, you know, we have had lots of discussion over the months in terms of how the audit committee, the board, the management team should be interacting relative to reports that have findings and recommendations. And I think this was a good example of how it should work, that when you do adopt a report and the findings and recommendations associated with that, and in essence, turn it over in, in direction to your management team to develop a plan of response, that's exactly what you got. And the management team's not going to agree with everything that we had to say, which I've told you all along, and that's just fine. But what you're seeing is, is action in response to it, so that we're, we're all making progress in, in getting value for the, for the dollars spent. Just in terms of one other item relative to that, for the, the tracking of this, so we'll add to our audit findings tracking report, these items, we'll enter the responses, we'll share at once with the audit committee in terms of all of them, we'll work with the city manager to identify those that are, are closed, and, and any that are truly open that, there's going to be near-term action versus we're going to consider a position or we're going to fund something when, when dollars become available. I don't think those items need to be open because they're not really open for action, so to speak. It's, you know, they may be just sometime in the future. But that will be a mechanism for us to have a repository of tracking this information holistically. Hopefully, that makes sense. So, strategic planning. So, good to see you all again. Hopefully, you found the, the strategic planning retreat productive. In your packet, you have the results of, in essence, that retreat. So, updated information relative to the city's, I'll say, draft goals, objectives, and strategies. What's in your packet reflects the comments that were received from the board, from management, and from the public. I have received comments from Supervisor Bonkowski, and I have notes relative to his comments in terms of some adjustments to make. For example, one was a suggestion to place the goals in alphabetical order to sort of take away any indication that they might be listed in priority order. The suggestion was also made to do that with the objectives. We, we might request to abstain from that just because the, the objectives are just structured in a way to fit on a page. But I think what we can certainly do when we're sharing this information with the public is to make it clear, abundantly clear, that nothing is in priority order relative to goals, objectives, or strategies. So, the, the point of today is you had requested that this information come back to you for review and approval before it goes out to the public, and I believe also some discussion about what taking it to the public would entail. And so, you have a, a cover memo with this information. The city manager and I spoke after the retreat about a public involvement process. In the memo, we've identified three activities. One, we had talked about at the retreat, open houses. We talked about maybe we'd do that at a couple of locations, perhaps the, the library and the community center, in which we would share this information, have sort of a general overview provided, and then what would be typical is like a station for each of the goals, to be able to have interaction with city employees and the public and gain their input. We would post the materials on the city's website, in both the website and then at the open houses would provide access to a survey to provide another mechanism to gather public input relative to goals and objectives and strategies. And then, there, there would be some direct outreach probably by the, the city manager to key stakeholder groups like the Chamber, the Nevada Community College, the Carson-Tahoe Hospital, some key, you know, large stakeholders within the community to also make sure that we're gaining their input. So, those were thoughts on public involvement. Of course, we'd be welcome to any other suggestions. I guess I'll turn that over to you for questions, comments.
Brad, go. I'm sorry, Jim, did you have your light on first? I didn't see that.
Open houses, would that be periodically throughout the day at different times and during the week or the weekend?
Yeah, well, the day, the days of the week, I'm not sure. We could discuss that. It, it could be either. But what would be typical, let's say it was a, a weekday, what would be typical is you would do a session in the morning, sort of so that people on the way to work could go to, a session during the lunchtime so that people could come there, and then a session after five so that people would have access to, to be able to participate after work. Typically, they're done during the week mainly because you're involving city employees and as long as you're providing times throughout the day that you're, you're trying to provide those access points and times. So, that's what would be typical.
And the, the link for the online survey, just on the city website, could we also have it posted on our local newspaper website and on Carson Now website as well for access to the public or for the public?
I don't know of any reason we couldn't.
Money. Okay, go.
We, we could explore that.
The link on Carson Now doesn't cost a thing. Give me the link, I'll post it. And Nevada Peel, I'll talk to Adam, I'm sure he'll put it on there as well. I don't think there will be a cost on either factor. Maybe wrong, but I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, did you want me to go through my comments?
That's up. Oh, do you want me to repeat that? Up to you, supervisor.
Well, I think for the benefit of the rest of the board and for the public, I think we should. And so, under safety, which is the middle of page three, or excuse me, it's actually page one, they're all marked page one, so that's going to be really helpful. Under safety, under deter and resolve crime, one of the objectives reads maintain or improve a crime resolution rate below that of the statewide average and the regional average. And I think the sheriff would prefer to have a crime resolution rate that's above the statewide average and regional average, but he, he can answer that.
We have conferred and agreed.
Okay. Okay, so we'll change below to above.
Correct.
And under safety also, under maintain safe facilities and infrastructure, the second objective says conduct life safety inspections of equipment, facilities, and infrastructure as required, but it doesn't reference maintenance. And so, we should incorporate maintenance, maintenance on that objective as well.
Got it.
Under sustain, boy, you must be getting close to lunch.
Do you want me to, I can go through four of you.
Thanks, Mark. Under sustainable infrastructure, under the third objective on the left, construct, staff and equip, construct, staff and equip one new fire station to serve the north and west portions of Carson City by December 31st, 2017. My preference would be to change December 31st, 17 to as soon as economically feasible. I don't know that three years to construct, staff, and equip a new fire station is, is within our realm of possibility at this point. But if it is, as soon as economically feasible would still cover it. Moving over to meet community infrastructure needs continued, so it's the last item on the right, it says provide a conveyance and drainage system to maintain a controlled flow of storm water throughout the city, but it doesn't address potable water and wastewater. So, if we could add controlled flow of storm water throughout the city and provide a clean potable water source and for the treatment of waste waters, including maintenance and replacement of facilities and equipment. And you already have all that written down.
I do, correct.
Moving over to quality of life and community, the second objective under ensure quality community assets. It currently says ensure a safe and adequate infrastructure that meets current and future community needs. It seems that that would be an appropriate item to move back to community infrastructure needs under sustainable infrastructure. It seems like that's a more applicable place to put that objective. And then, just two typographical corrections under efficient government. The fourth objective under streamline processes, we need to add the word "to" between leadership and improve, so it reads assist city leadership to improve operational and process efficiency. And moving directly to the right, under maximize communication and transparency, we need to delete the D from provided consistent so that it says provide consistent timely financial reports. That's it.
Got it, thank you.
Any other comments on the board? Let me suggest, I got Supervisor Bonkowski's idea on listing the goals alphabetically, but it occurred to me that on the efficient government one, you could use, move maximize communication and transparency to the end, and then those goals would spell out the acronym SLIM.
Nice.
Nice, huh? Okay. Don't worry about it. All right.
That's why we pay the big bucks, right?
I know, that's why I get it, you know. I could, I could say, you know, we could argue about whether we need the word "to" in there on this last one, but, you know, we'll deal with it.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Board comments? We okay with those changes? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move to accept, I move to accept the draft strategic plan components as submitted by Moss Adams and as amended in today's discussion, and to establish the process and direct staff in Moss Adams to conduct community outreach to receive public input as outlined by Moss Adams.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Raybaut on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnae carried unanimously. Thank you, Mark, very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's take up the fire issues, 12 Alpha.
12 Alpha and Bravo.
Okay. We want to take those together. We'll have to take them up independently to discuss, but we'll take them up in conjunction for ease of presentation. You ready to go or you need a minute?
No, I think we're good.
All right.
Technology, right?
Chief Shuans.
How you guys doing? Long day already for you. I know you guys have a long one on there. For the record, Bob Shuans, Fire Chief. Didn't take long to come to you guys to say, to make some changes. And a couple of things, you had brought up the Moss Adams study, and that's one of the reasons, as soon as we kind of took these roles over, we looked at that study, and one of the, one of the bottom lines was, is to look at what we could do within our current resources that we had to make some of these things work for us. And we're going to kind of go over that. So, what I'd like to do is probably go over the, the position of the battalion chief first to a deputy chief, and then we can talk about the secretarial staff. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on the, on that, we have our normal hierarchy, hierarchy that we're going to put up on the screen. So, if you look right now, this is kind of how we're functioning. If you, if, if you guys have all been ICS class, so we kind of work like an ICS format. But as you look on there, it says the fire chief, and then everything funnels down to the assistant chief, and then from there, it goes to the, what we currently have is four battalion chiefs. We're currently, we have, everything funnels to the assistant chief, and that's where we're kind of running to the issue, and we're trying to spread that out. And the other thing is, is that even if you move information back up, everything has to go to him. Now, if you go to the next slide, so that's kind of our overall basis, but when we go to the everyday occurrence, you'll notice that when we're trying to do our normal job functions of everything that's in the fire department, I don't know if you guys have actually seen all the detailed stuff that we're actually doing now. If you take a look at that, really, two of those battalion chiefs aren't there because we work a 24-hour day schedule, so two of those guys are always gone. So, really, there's only four people there that are doing the work that we have to move this down. And the way it's set up now is everything funnels through the assistant chief and then down, down the food chain, if you will. So, like on the battalion EMS chief, the day-to-day operations are all running into him. And what we did is we looked at everything we were trying to do and said, how can we figure out a way to reduce some of this workload and to spread out our downstream delegation and to work on some stuff? So, if we go to the next slide, and this is where we'll kind of show you where we're at. So, what we're doing here is kind of changing the system up a little bit, and if you will, we're kind of splitting the house in half. Okay? So, on the blue side that you have there, that's going to be administrative side, and the red guy will be the operations. Before, the assistant chief is taking care of all the administration, all the stations, all equipment, everything as it comes down and comes back up was going to one single point. Now, we're going to split it up. And kind of what that does is we looked at the Moss Adams study, and some of it said that we didn't have the right appropriate folks in there, we were doing things that we weren't looking at. So, we looked at that and came up with this, with this design. And some of the changes that do, it's, when we have a better follow-up for assigned projects. So, let's say, for instance, we have to get one of the vehicles fixed, and, and we can send it to the city yards, we get some follow-up back to one person instead of it going, we'll have a couple of folks, but it's going to come back up to the operations side and not get lost somewhere because we have exactly one person, and if the assistant chief was really busy, it would get prioritized down. So, we have that, we have, the other thing too that really helps is we're going to have a faster response to some of our own guys. So, if there's an issue that we need to fix, okay, if, if you're sending it back up the food chain, if you will, and it gets, it gets deprioritized a little bit, a little problem becomes a big problem down on the bottom end if we can't figure out how to fix it fast enough. And we're looking at an improved efficiency to take care of our own problems within the stations, not just if it's an emergency side, but also on the administrative side, policies that have to change, some of the work we're doing with all our SOPs and upgrading all that stuff for the new technology that we have working. And the other thing too, it's also going to help define roles, responsibilities, and structure with a direct link. So, before, we were working with the three battalion chiefs and the EMS chief, everything, for instance, EMS-wise, would just go to one person, and we couldn't spread it out. Even the other BCS would assign it back. So, now, we can actually take a look at everybody and spread that workload out. The operational daily BCS can go ahead and move those positions over and take care of that. And we're trying, you know, obviously, we're splitting up the, the job functions, and we're trying to delegate additional duties so we can focus, focus on new opportunities of the fire department. Because in the, in the other study, and some of the stuff says the chief, because we're doing both emergency management, fire prevention, and as running the fire department, some of those things that we're so busy doing that, we can't look at some of the new opportunities. And what we've already had meetings with is that we're trying to change funding sources for the ambulance enterprise fund, we're working with, trying to get some new Medicaid funding, and we're trying to do all those things through behavioral health, and it takes a lot of resource and time, but it has to be somebody who's not tied up on the emergency side and on the operations side, and we need some help on the administrative side, and that's where we can kind of split those up. The other thing too, you guys probably heard, community paramedics. I mean, basically, that's the, that's the new focus, and that's what's coming to this area, but it's taken the fire department, and it's making the fire department and paramedics and everything are kind of becoming your rolling public health, if you will, because they'll call us. So, we're coming up with new plans to go ahead and to work on that, but by dividing some of the workload, it gives me an opportunity to go talk to the hospitals, to make sure that we have those contracts in place, to make sure we have funding sources, and to work on the global perspective to set those down. And then, one of the other things that, that the city manager has talked about is succession planning, okay? Right now, our current staff of the fire department, so if you took all the BCS, myself, everybody, everybody can retire today if they wanted to. They all meet the qualifications within our PERS system. The other thing that the, what they did in the The other thing that, what they did in the early 1985 is they reduced some of the PERS timeframe, everybody caps out at 75%. So if you take a 28-year employee, they're capped out. Well, by the time you move up in rank, it takes a while for us to get there, so we have to worry about, you know, some of our succession planning, and this is going to allow us a little bit to help so we can mentor some of the folks who were down in the captain range, even the operator's range, to say, "Look, this is what you have to do to move up into the department," because there's so much institutional knowledge that we have that we have to pass it back down, and we're working on that. And this will kind of help that, because we can take the administrative side and pull some of those captains up and say, "Hey, this is what you need to do to be an operational BC, and this is what's going to take to move up into our command division levels." And then, the other thing too is, while we're working on that, if you look at one of the sheets that we gave you in there on the funding, and we had a meeting with, Nick is still here, so we'll pull him in, and you met with him also, right? We kind of changed the funding. We had initially, it was about $9,000, and we actually changed it. It's only about an $800 change to move the battalion chief to the division chief because of some of the longevity and the holiday accrual rates and the value of management leave. So because if you move to the unclassified position, those particular payouts go away. So it really comes down, instead of, like I said, it was 9,000, and Nick had asked me, "Do you want to address it or change it?" And I go, "Well, we can address it here instead of submitting a late paperwork." So I apologize if that's not the right format for you. But really, it's about 800 bucks to go ahead and do that. So, and your question, Brad, is that we looked at the efficiency of the current fire department, trying to make everything what we can and can't do to make this work, split up the workload a little bit, make it a little more efficient as we go, and then, I'm sure I'll be back later on as we look at some of the other efficiencies that we're working on and bring those to the board, but this is what we can currently do with our current structure without adding additional staff into our command structure. And at the same time with that, if you want to look at some of those things, we can roll right into the other one of the clerical staff if you want, or is this a separate issue? Okay. So on the clerical side, again, what happened is, is that we've lost, a long time ago, one of our full-time employees had passed away, and it got moved to a part-time position. And when in doing that, we also had some additional increases in workloads to the clerical staff. And what we did is we looked at what isn't being done by the reduction of staff that we currently have, and what hasn't been focused on because we can't get it done by having some part-time folks that are there. And like, for instance, fire prevention. Normally, we have a fuels reduction program, we have a smoke detector reporting program that, for apartments, so we have to fill out the paperwork, we would usually send it to the owners of the apartment complexes, they fill out the paperwork, send it back, and then we inspect it. Well, now, we haven't done that, turns out, for about several years, about mailing out those types of sheets to the home, to the apartment owners for smoke detector for life safety. So that's an issue for us, so then we have to send out some of our other crews in fire prevention to actually go and inspect those apartment complexes. So there's one little bit of an issue. False alarm tracking, normally, if we go to a building numerous times, we track the false alarms. Well, we can't do that right now, because it's, the other three folks who are working there are just kind of overwhelmed, if you will, and we can't get it done. The other thing is too, on, we have Knox box and CAD data entries, and Knox box are our keys to, basically, keys to the city, and they're protected systems on each particular building. And every time we get one of those Knox boxes or get a request in, we need to document that and to put it in a computer format, so we can pull that and we can track everything that we're doing and where all the Knox boxes are. And it turns out that that's, the data entry hasn't really been performed all that well, and how it impacts us is that on the crew side, so if we go to a building on a false alarm, in our data systems, on our CADs, we should be able to pull up where that Knox box is, so at 3:00 AM, we can find it on the side of the building and open the door versus taking the door out, right? So those kind of things haven't been, haven't been done. And then, on just a couple instances on the performance of duties, like for the ambulance, for the ambulance division, now, this is a good thing, we've increased our CC CARES membership program 43% in the last three years. Our ambulance subscription program is the fee that they pay for to waive insurance, anything over insurance covers on the ambulance, right? Well, an increase in 43% is a huge workload on the amount of people that walk into the fire station because they fill out those forms, or they want the forms, or additional phone calls. The CPR and our CERT program used to be grant-funded, and the grant-funded, the grants went away about five years ago, and that was shifted to the clerical staff to be able to handle that, and that's, and that's, the CPR becomes a priority for us for the CPR classes, and it just takes a lot of time and work and effort away from that clerical position. And then last, we've had an increase in call volumes of about 16% in the last couple of years, and those calls that we generate on the operations side also create more work on the clerical side with more phone calls, more billing actions, and more work for those guys to get it done. And the other thing too is on an administrative staff side, if you have to get something drawn up, or we have to get a letter done, and we have to do that, most of the time, it's done by ourselves. We can't hand anything off to any of the secretaries or the management assistants because they're too busy. So we're taking a command staff, and it's doing their, all their own writing and everything else. Not that we can't do it, but it's just a time issue, timing issue. And that's why I'm here in front of you, for all those reasons, to take a look at that. And it was identified in the Moss Adams study, we had it identified before we even took this position, and we knew we were going to come to you, it just kind of all came together. So I hope that explains it all, and visually, you can kind of see we're splitting the house up a little bit.
The cost on that one?
And the cost on that one is going from, we currently have a $15 an hour budgeted as a part-time, and it's going to, the MA-1 position starts about 1625 an hour, and with a, we also have the rollups of about 30%. So I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of you, but we can probably ask some.
18,200 plus benefits.
Thank you. See? There you go.
Okay. Questions of the board? Brad, supervisor Monkowsky?
Bob, several questions for you. On the battalion chiefs, you had four battalion chiefs. When you stepped up, that left one vacant position that's now been vacant for a month or so.
Correct.
How has having three battalion chiefs versus four affected your shift programming? And if you only leave three battalion chiefs and make a second deputy chief, do you see an issue there with only having three rather than four with staffing?
Well, currently on the staffing, you asked, we fill that role right now, it gets bumped up by a captain. So although we have a vacant battalion chief in the full-time position, it's staffed with a captain, and it's manned back on overtime. We currently have that position posted right now, and we're getting ready to do interviews on March 9th, I believe, for that position. So we have an opening, but we really don't, because the operational sides have been filled, and those guys step up and do that position. The EMS position that I took over has been assigned to Chief Charles, and he's been doing that as a 40-hour battalion chief instead of an on-duty 24-hour BC. So basically, we have this, we still have the same four, but we only have three on the books, and we're using an acting, an actor, if you will, to fill that 24-hour position.
So is the overtime incurred to bring that fourth, or to bring the captains in to fill that fourth position, is that costing us more than filling the position?
In the long run, yes. Yes. Because that position is funded. And the other thing, when we man a captain, you give them, they get an additional 10% for additional duties and responsibility for that time. It's not the person filling the battalion chief's role, so you have that, it's the guy who's filling the captain's role that moved, and that's an overtime position backwards. And the other thing is, is that because we eliminated six positions about six years ago, we don't have any extra people where it doesn't not cost us overtime if somebody's missing. We allow, there's two people that could be gone, right? So like right now, if we have an open position, a third guy off all the time will create an overtime, so we're trying to hire that position to reduce the overtime downstream.
You had made a comment that by splitting into admin and operations, that that gives you an opportunity to pull captains up. I assume what you meant by that was you would be able to pull captains up into the battalion commander or the battalion chief positions, but that would be when you have a current battalion chief retired?
Well, yeah, but I was trying to say on, that was on our succession planning, that if we have a person that's able to take some of the captains and say, "This is how the battalion chief has to work, and this is how that role is going to be mentored and to move into those," having an administrative chief allows him to assign, I can assign that to him and say, "Take one of our captains and show them what he needs to do for a BC, and all the functions that have to go with that," and if they want to get into those roles. Because right now, we just don't have the time to mentor any of these folks to get into that succession planning.
And then, Nick Provindenti, Bob, you had mentioned that the actual financial difference is $800, not 9,680. Can we actually go over those numbers so that we can see them?
I do. I just had it in front of me, so hold on.
Roger Molendorf?
I did, I just had it, it's right here. There you go. It's on the bottom.
Again, for the record, Nick Provindenti, finance director. What we were trying to do, we were trying to try to bring this into an apples-to-apples comparison, and it's kind of hard with the battalion chiefs, because they have the value of accrued holiday and the value of management leave. Management leave, basically, they can, they get 40 hours of management leave, and they can either use it as time off, or they can get paid for it. And the same with accrued holiday, they could either, at the beginning of the fiscal year, I believe, they either decide if they get paid for the holiday, or if it gets put into their, into their bank. So some of the, some of the folks use the management leave as leave, and some of them, you know, take it as pay. So what we did is we added the value of the accrued holiday and the value of the management leave onto the battalion chief's salary to try to give you an apples-to-apples type comparison. So, you know, the deputy chief position will not have that accrued holiday, they don't get, they will not get paid for management leave, they'll be considered an unclassified employee, so they'll get two weeks of management leave, but they don't have the option of getting paid for any of it. So that's kind of why we added those, those two items on there. So does that make sense?
So the value of that time is approximately $9,000 annually?
Correct. Yeah, the accrued holiday is about $6,516, and the value of the management leave is about $2,369.
Thank you. And then, one last question, Bob, on the clerical position. You mentioned that right now, we're not sending out the forms for apartment owners to report compliance with smoke detectors, smoke alarms.
Correct.
What is the recourse? I mean, what is the recourse against a property owner if, I know property owners that have apartments that would get that form and just say, "Yep, they'll work," and send it back in? How do we reconcile that? How do we know that they're actually working if we don't go out and inspect them?
Well, we do go out and inspect them, but not on an everyday basis or an every-year basis. They were, before, they were set up, they got the form, it's about, it's either every year, every three years, I'd have to double-check for you. And because of that form, we actually took some of the owners of the properties word for them that they were there. Now, we would go onsite to check the fire extinguishers and make sure the stairwells are clean and all that kind of stuff. We normally expect that every year, but to get into each individual unit and push the button, we don't have the time or resources to do that. So we would send those forms out to go ahead and have the owners verify and certify that they, that they actually checked them and they are working. So now, we have to send out, we have, we're actually missing a folks, a couple of people that used to be in fire prevention, but now we have a part-time guy, and that's pretty much what his priority is, is the apartment and life safety of those things, to go out and make sure that that life safety stuff is done, and they contact the owners to make sure that those smoke detectors are working. And if, on an apartment complex, if somebody has to, happens to be there, they can open the door and say, "Hey, is your smoke alarm working?" And push the button. The other thing too, we're looking at is if some of our engine companies can also do those, and we can have that particular, if they're not too busy, running calls, if they can make it to an apartment complex, we'll check. So that particular issue is kind of a big one, because it's a life safety. Forms have to go out, folks have to do it, and we have to verify it, but, you know, I asked some of the folk, the folks who are doing the job currently, what is it that we're not doing for fire prevention? And that was the one that they brought up, which is a higher priority for us.
So do you have recourse against a property owner if they fill out the form improperly?
We do. You have to go through the whole process, and Dave Rubin would probably be a lot better at it, right off the top of my head, on for the apartment complexes, but if we go to a residence that's an apartment, they have to have it by code for a working smoke alarm. We'll go back there and say, "Look, you have to, on inspection," and we'll have to go back and make sure that you complete it. We give them a certain timeframe, usually about 30 days. Then we go back again, and we can actually keep going all the way through to recite them and get the DA involved to make it appropriate, to make sure that they follow the rules.
Other comments, questions? Supervisor Bagwell, Laura, go.
Can you tell me, so this position will actually have to be, the secretarial one will have to actually be posted?
Yes.
And recruited for. So your current part-time person cannot just move to full-time?
No.
So it'll be an actual recruited position?
Correct. She has to apply for it, just because the other position wasn't, doesn't have the same qualifications.
Okay. And what is the length of time that it generally takes to fill a position, when you have to do a recruitment?
For a clerical? Oh, Melanie left. I was going to say, about 30 days, because it's going to, we have to take, we have to go ahead and post it, and then we give them an opportunity to apply and then come back and interview them. But we'd like to do it relatively quick, because we could really use the help.
Okay.
So within 30 days, I'm sure we'll probably have that position filled.
So the impact that's listed on here, though, is on an annualized basis? It was 18,200 plus benefits? So it won't be that for this fiscal year? Or is that? Okay. Thank you.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Public comment? Anybody? Okay, we'll bring them back to the board, and we'll take up item 12A first. This is the classification for the clerical position. What do we want to do, board? Supervisor Abell, we'll tee it up, and we'll see where we go.
I move to approve the reclassification of a part-time position to a full-time MA-1 position, and approve an augmentation of the Carson City Fire Department budget to cover the increase in costs.
Motion by supervisor Abell, second by supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Okay?
Thank you.
You did all right for your first one.
Hey, okay, great, that's good.
Huh? Now, watch.
You probably won't like the next one.
Now, watch the next one, man, okay?
I know, huh?
Anybody want to make a motion to deny that one?
Okay.
Supervisor Abell, give it a shot.
I move to approve the reclassification of a battalion chief to a deputy chief unclassified position, and approve an augmentation of the Carson City Fire Department budget to cover the increase in costs.
Motion by supervisor Abell, second by supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay carried unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your help. It makes a huge difference for us. Thank you.
Please tell your folks at my law office, we're just now finishing hardwiring all our smoke alarms.
Perfect.
Okay?
Outstanding. All right. I would like to say one thing, though, on Brad, one of the things that you brought up about the other stations and that kind of stuff, in the Moss Adams study, for economically feasible, we will bring it back to you, okay? Just so you, it's coming, on how we can figure out a way to fund it. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, chief. Okay. Let's see if we can get through finance, this is the uncollectible account. Nick, we do this about every year, you want to write off $398,749 in uncollectible accounts?
Correct, Mary. Actually, we do it, for the record, Nick Provindenti, finance director, we do it twice a year. This is the first six months of the fiscal year, from July 1st to December 31st. We do have a budget of, in bad debt, of $1,080,000. So, this is actually, we anticipate about half a million dollars every six months, this is a little bit less than that, just under $400,000. So, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Question?
Nick, I had a conversation with Dr. Pintar, and she had mentioned something about the fact that there are indigent funds that, that can be, or grants that can be applied for, and I'm just wondering if you're aware of anything like that, and if that could be applied to offset what we write off all the time.
I can talk about that. We are currently, excuse me, currently working on, working with the public health department to get some of that funding. What it is, is coming through Medicaid with a payback reimbursement through the feds, and it's a dollar match. Okay? It took me about three nights of reading this to figure it all out, but the way I understand it is that the state plan Medicare and Medicaid has to be altered for the public health division to actually be the third party of that, to go ahead and request the funds, and then Medicaid sends the funds down from us, from the matching funds from the feds, so you kind of have to spend it to get it. That's kind of how it works. But then, we're working on it on a global arena between Lyon County and Douglas County, because everybody will be able to benefit from that. Okay? And as, as those funds are there. So, we also, from the south, in Las Vegas, we got ahold of Senator Kilpatrick, I think he was a senator, right? Yes. Assembly, sorry. Assemblywoman Kilpatrick. And they actually wrote a BDR on that to work, to get some legislative done to, for our state plan, to be able for the fire departments to fund that, because it's also an issue for southern Nevada, because they're getting ready to start transporting, or transporting more. But comes to find out that they don't have to have legislative work to get the plan changed. They can do it by their own board motions without a legislative agenda. So, we're, we're trying to get the legislature to make sure that that's actually the case, and to say that the state plan can be changed and augmented to be able to allow those funds to funnel through to us. Okay? The only issue is, is that there's a cap on how much money there is, and these fall outside the cap from Medicaid, because it's a match fund outside of Medicaid, however, we still have to get it approved, and then Medicaid actually told us they want to keep a percentage of that for their administrative costs. So, it's kind of like, it's a filter of money, and everybody's snagging some on the way down, and we're trying to work through that to figure out what that percentage will be. Like I said, it's really complicated, but that's like the Reader's Digest version, if that helps. Okay? So, we're really working on that.
Your digest version?
That is. It's really hard. So, hopefully, that works. So, we're, we're really working on that.
And I think that would be a great new, first task for the new administrative deputy chief.
Jim, go. Supervisor, Supervisor Shirk.
Nick, yesterday I asked you, how much did we cost this last year, if you had that figure?
I don't recall the exact amount, I believe it was about $1,003,000, it was more last year. We had about 800, 750 to 800,000 that first six months, because we were, we were writing off some old, some old accounts, so we've pretty much caught up with that, and, and so this amount, again, is just under $400,000, and the budget is just over a million in that account. Okay?
Okay. Public comment? Board? Supervisor Brinkowski?
I move to approve the application to remove the uncollectible accounts receivable specified in the application from the records of the ambulance fund, for a total amount of $398,749.28 in uncollectible accounts receivable.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, let's take up 13 Bravo, this is the fixed asset issue.
Correct. We're just asking you to allow the finance department to delete the fixed assets that we have on the list from our general fixed asset account group for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
I got a couple questions up here, Supervisor Bagwell, then Supervisor Shirk.
So, on the list of items that are being deleted, there's a, in the sheriff patrol, there's a Nikon professional camera, $8,486.50. That asset is only from 2011. Why are we, did something happen to the camera?
I believe it, I believe something happened to the camera.
Okay, because I was like, that says 2011.
Right.
No. Thank you.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was salvaged and junked, yeah. Correct.
Supervisor Shirk, go.
When it says obsolete, are we replacing all of those items that are obsolete?
Well, they probably have already been replaced. That's what I understand. Yeah, most of the stuff, you know, they're basically junk, you know, or they're, you know, they're old technology.
When it says salvage slash junked, it's either one of the two, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Or both.
Good point.
Okay. Okay. Public comment? Anybody? Board, ready? Supervisor Brinkowski, go.
I move to allow the finance department to delete fixed assets from the general fixed asset account group for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Abell on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Let's take up 13 Charlie, this is a condition of each fund in the treasury. Nick, you got anything to add that's unusual about this one?
No, Mayor.
Any board, public comments? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the treasury, and the statements of receipts and expenditures through February 9th, 2015, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Abell on the motion discussion. Hearing none. You should light on you.
Sorry.
Sorry. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Let's take up the cost allocation plan.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. For the record, Nick Providenti Finance Director, staff is requesting that the board accept the cost allocation plan using the financial information from fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, for our use in preparing the FY 2016 Carson City budget. As per last year, the city will also use the OMB circular A87 cost plan, which removes all legislative costs, and board of supervisors' costs, and the city manager costs from the allocation for the Quality of Life Special Revenue Fund. That was determined about four years ago. NRS 354-613-1C was passed in 2011. It requires us to bring this item to you in order for us to actually charge the other funds, for, for, charge the enterprise funds and the special revenue funds a charge. Just, just a quick little background on that, there was some governments in Nevada, mainly North Las Vegas, they were, they were basically taking money from their enterprise funds. I believe their sewer fund had $100 million in connection fee amounts in there. They were basically taking that money and trying to make their general funds whole, and so that's kind of why this, this statute came about. Basically, we've never done that. We've always had a cost allocation plan for the 18 years that I've been in finance, and, you know, we do use a systematic and rational way of allocating our indirect costs. So, we do have the plan here, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anything unusual in this plan, that's different from last year's plan, that you need to point out to us?
No, Mayor.
Same third-party vendor?
Correct. Yeah, Mahoney and Associates, they've been doing it for seven or eight years, I believe.
Got a couple questions up here. Supervisor Bagwell, then Supervisor Brinkowski.
So, Nick, what I'd like to indicate here is, we are not going to be doing cost allocation to the new 1/8 infrastructure fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so just, again, the public's aware, we are not taking cost allocation out of the funding source.
Yeah, that's, that's not really an operating fund. I mean, basically, we're going to be collecting the tax, and then we're going to be using it to pay debt service, so there's, there's not really operations going.
No cost allocation.
Correct.
And then, also, just for clarification, we do get recovery from federal funds, not necessarily through a cost allocation plan. We additionally have an indirect rate?
Correct.
That we charge to maybe, like, transportation funds and/or grants that Health and Human Services?
Correct.
Do. So, that is another way that we recover costs for the general fund in an indirect rate, so.
Correct. Yeah, I just signed, as a matter of fact, you bring that up, I just signed the, the transportation amount. We're going to get almost 25% indirect cost, you know, based on, based on the studies that we have. So, yeah, we, we try to get as much federal dollars as we can. That's our goal.
And there was one correction under the treasurer, this is on page 22?
Correct. Yes.
Under the treasurer's account, 7.010, jack collections, that should be an allocation to Fund 225, the transit fund.
That's correct. And it's, it's actually correct in the narrative, it's just not correct in the table of contents. So, we'll make that change.
Nick, the question I have is on, under Public Works, you have general fund support, and the comment is, these costs, oh, that's on page, there's no page number. Mine's stapled on the top, let's see. Anyway, these costs are the, are, under general fund support, says these costs are the time spent supporting general fund activities. The costs are identified, but not allocated. Just, why not?
Right. Well, basically, we don't allocate costs to the other general fund departments, because what we do is, we, we allocate all the, all the costs that we charge the general fund that aren't charged to the other funds. So, there really isn't any, any reason for us to charge another general fund department with a general fund cost. So, we, what we, what we try to do is, we try to capture these costs from the other enterprise funds or the special revenue funds. So, we, we do allocate those costs, just to find out how much the actual cost of the program is, but we just don't get any money from it, because it's just basically taking from one pocket to pay the other in the general fund. It doesn't do any, it doesn't, doesn't get us any additional funds in the general fund. Does that make sense?
Any other comments from the board? Public comments? Seeing none, motions in order. Supervisor Brinkowski?
I move to accept the Carson City cost allocation plan for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014, for use in preparing the FY 2016 Carson City budget as amended.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, now we're going to augment, we're thinking about augmenting the budget under item 13 Echo. Going to add 4, $46 million to the budget, right? Providenti?
Correct, Mayor.
Good.
Again, for the record, we're, we're asking you to adopt a resolution to augment and amend the 2014, 2015 budget in the amount of $46,248,700. So, the last six pages, we've included kind of an explanation of all the augmentations, and they're done by fund. There's basically three columns. There's a transfer column, an additional revenue column, and then a fund balance working capital column. The transfer columns are always going to, are always going to come out to zero, because well, all we're doing is, we're taking one line item and moving it to another line item. So, we're reducing and subtracting. The additional revenues are typically grants, for the most part, that's what they are. They're grants that we didn't know about when we did the original budget that we've gotten in the last six, seven months. And then the working, the fund balance slash working capital, working capital would be from the enterprise funds, and then the fund balance would be from the, all the other governmental funds. Basically, what we're doing is, we're taking, we're taking either restricted fees, donations, those types of things in the general fund, and then in the other funds that actually have projects, we assume that the project is going to get finished on June 30th of 2014. Obviously, a lot of the projects don't, they carry between fiscal years, so that ends up increasing the actual fund balance amount. So, we, we're just taking that fund balance and re-appropriating it to the other projects. Those are the, those are the main, the main amounts. So, if you had any specific questions on any of the funds, I'd be happy to answer them. And it's kind of complicated, I know, and I'm trying to do the best I can in explaining these, these augmentations.
I've got a couple questions up here. Supervisor Shirk, then Supervisor Bagwell.
Nick, as we talked yesterday, I had mentioned the VNT infrastructure fund, $130,000, if you could briefly explain that?
Correct. Yeah, basically, what that is, is there's a two-month lag in collections for the sales tax, so we just are not collecting enough money to basically pay the actual transfer. So, what this is doing is, this is repaying the debt service fund for that two-month lag period time that we had at the last, at the last couple months of the year, because there's, we don't get May or June sales tax numbers until July and August. So, the fund just didn't have enough cash to actually transfer over into the debt service fund. So, what this is doing is repaying that, that amount.
I'm sorry. And that's, and that's working with getting the funds from one fund to another?
One fund to the debt service fund.
And then reimbursing the fund where we took it from to, to pay the other one, correct?
Correct.
Basically.
Basically.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
So, Nick, one of the things I want to bring out in this augmentation, so that everyone is, is clear, it's not an object that was approved in the prior budget that we are actually authorizing with this augmentation, is the purchase of a patient billing system in the ambulance fund. So, while it is a transfer, it actually will now authorize the purchase of the patient billing system.
Correct.
And for the record, that, again, is a one-time expenditure need to purchase iPads and download the program, so that we can potentially improve our ambulance billing, potentially even for these Medicaid and all the insurance companies.
Correct.
But it's a one-time purchase, but that was not in the prior budget.
That's correct.
We were doing it with the augmentation.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, secondarily, we are increasing our contingency, so the unobligated leftover money from last year is $893,158.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, again, put it on the record and disclose that.
And it would take board approval to, to spend that money.
Nick, I just wanted to commend you on the, on the explanation of augmentations at the back, at the package, because I spent a lot of time going through the tables in the front, matching everything up, and then I got to the back of the pa, or the back of the package, and it was all right there, so.
Well, that's, that's my staff. Nancy Paulson puts this together, and she does a great job, so we appreciate it.
Well, I want to thank you, Nick, because when I sat down with you, you explained that, so I didn't have to go through the. I just want to go back to what Supervisor Bagwell mentioned, the $50,000. That doesn't have to come before the board in any fashion for the purchase of these?
Well, we're actually coming to you now to approve this.
Please be quiet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I'm clear on it, that, that it is going through the process as we speak today?
Correct.
Okay. Then, on the library, which I mentioned yesterday as well, the $14,000, which is in parentheses on that same page, if you could briefly explain that?
Sure. So, with, you know, with the brick, the library moving out of the brick building, all we're doing basically is transferring that money from the library's budget to the community development's budget. It's, it's the $14,000, it's, it's for, for a front desk, and, and I'm not exactly sure if they're actually even going to, I mean, we've, they've been filling the position for the first six months of the year, there's not really anybody there now, so I'm not even sure if they're going to be spending all that money, because the actual brick is, I mean, as we know it, is kind of going away. But that's all we're doing, is we, I think, I think they, they made a decision back in July to, to actually have Lee Plimmell supervise that position instead of the library, so we're just moving the budget from one budget account to the other.
Any other comments from the board? Questions from the board? Public? Anybody? I don't see any. Supervisor Brinkowski, go.
I move to adopt Resolution 2015 R11, a resolution to augment and amend the Carson City fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget in the amount of $46,248,700.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Providenti. All right. We're now going to recess as the board of supervisors, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to Supervisor Abell as the Chair of Redevelopment.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like the record to reflect that we have a quorum, and open, move on to item number 16, public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none? Move on to item 17. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes for November 20th, 2014, and January 5th, 2015? Okay. Motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City redevelopment authority for November 20th, 2014, as presented.
Second.
Not abstaining from those ones.
We have a motion and a second, one abstention. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Motion passes, and the next set.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City redevelopment authority for January 5th, 2015, as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Seven.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. On to item number 18, under Finance. Nick, are you going to take us through this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Nick, Providenti Finance Director. Again, we're, we're asking you to augment the redevelopment authorities' budget in the amount, a total amount of $170,631. So if you look at that, that last page, I, the explanation of augmentations, on the transfer amount, again, we're, we're asking you to transfer from the undesigned, undesignated account in the redevelopment revolving fund, and appropriate that in the Third Street Events Plaza account. So that was based on board action, board items. And then the fairgrounds, again, we did this back in early, just, early July to help with the fair. So we're just asking you to augment from any fund balance, basically, to, to increase those accounts. And then, if there's any other questions?
Any board discussion on this?
Nick, in our discussion yesterday, I also asked you, what do you think the, this, the amount of money will be collected in this yearly, of ballpark?
Correct. We're anticipating probably about the same as we collected last year, about $1,750,000. And we're hoping to have, you know, we'll, we anticipate having, again, we're going to need another $275,000 or so in 2016 to finish the Third Street project. And then we're anticipating probably another $50,000 to $75,000 in undesignated money. Again, you know, we're still in the process of compiling the budgets, as I had stated earlier. So in another couple of weeks, we'll know a pretty good, we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea of how much that actual amount will be. But again, if I were to guess, it'd be between $50,000 and $75,000 of unappropriated, or undesignated money.
Any other board questions or comments? Any public comment? Hearing none? I'll bring it back to the board.
Can I have a resolution number?
2015 RAR1.
RAR1? Oh, boy. Okay. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2015 RAR1, a resolution to augment and amend the Carson City redevelopment authority fiscal year 2014, 15 budget in the amount of $170,631.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.